I'd like to open the hearing scheduled for 7:00 p.m., with continuation of a hearing on the definitive subdivision for Kensington Estates off Glendale Road, as published February 9th through January 16th of 2012. Just so everybody knows, we're going to be hearing from the applicant, we'll hear comments from the public. We won't be voting on this tonight because the DPW has not issued the stormwater permit and we can't vote until the DPW has issued the stormwater permit. So no matter what happens tonight, we're going to continue this future meeting. So that being said, I will ask the applicant, who's representing the applicant? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Peter Wells, I'm with the Berkshire Design Group. I'm going to run through the early part of this presentation rather quickly because we've seen it before, but I know there are some people here that might not have seen it. So Kensington Estates is a 55-acre parcel that's off of West Hampton Road and Glendale. There's three access and frontage points, West Hampton Road and two off of Glendale. This is a USGS locust map which shows our parcel and the surrounding areas. A little hard to see. This basically just shows the existing site. The 55 acres characterized by, it's a mature woodland toward the rear and an old field. Let's go back to, yeah. Anyway, there's wetland resources onsite, there's an intermittent stream that bisects the parcel, its own rural residential with an overlay district. Some visuals of the site itself, this is off of Route 66 looking into the site, portions of the site that used to be a farmland and various crops, mainly corn. Looking down Glendale going toward East Hampton, our site is on the right here. This is the area toward the rear of the site that will be left open space and preserved. This is the intermittent stream last year when it was dry. This is our list of abutters that we've been working with for the past many years with regard to their concerns and trying to address as many of them as possible. Project history, it started in 1989, so it's been over two decades. We've gotten preliminary approval in 1990, 2003, and 2009. It's one of our longest-running projects. This recent submission has been up to a definitive. We have responded to new regulations when it comes to wetlands and Route 66 widening, and Conservation Commission approved the wetland line and stream in 2010. This site, this slide shows the submission last year of the definitive plan and shows the concerns that we heard at our last meeting over the summer. The bus shelter location needs to be moved after talking with the school department. There was insufficient road and tangent angles. The DPW made that point that their regulations say they want 90 degrees and they want 100 feet of straight road coming into any roadway, even though we didn't quite agree with them in terms of safety. This road was as safe as a 100-degree tangent, but we went ahead and made that note and we have addressed it, which I'll show you in a minute. This is the approximate house location across the street that requested some screening from headlights that are exiting here and turning left, and there was lack of screening toward the southern portion as you enter the point. So we made those notes and have addressed them with a new design. We have a 100-foot tangent at a 90-degree angle here, and in doing so, we had to realign the roadway and realign many of these lots in terms of where they're located and their sizes. It's still the same concept in general, we have 24 lots that vary in size from a quarter of an acre on up to three-quarters of an acre. After speaking with the DPW regarding concerns that they had, both from a, not design, but utility and maintenance standpoint, we have opted to go with a totally private road. So it will be maintained and owned and managed by the homeowners association.
One more time on the lot sizes, I'm sorry, you said.
Excuse me, can you address all questions to us, please? Let him speak.
The lot sizes are a quarter of an acre to three-quarters of an acre in size. We've relocated the bus shelter to be off of Glendale Avenue. We've added more screening, both vegetation but also fencing in this area, and we've added screening across the road in Glendale to prevent headlights from shining into the living room of one of our abutters. Other minor changes that have occurred, the roadway itself is still the same width, it's 22 feet wide, we have two speed bumps for traffic calming, we are going with bituminous curbing for the majority of the roadway with the exceptions of the intersections both at Route 66 and Glendale will be granite. Drainage-wise, it hasn't changed much, we have responded to the DPW minor concerns with regard to, this invert should be two inches higher, this should be labeled this way, please provide a detail of the catch basins, minor things that are more clerical than deal-breaking. Our open space remains the same, we have 65% open space, 50% is required for an open space development like this, so we have close to 36 acres of open space, which I think makes the project quite unique. Our storm drainage system still, well, I'll go over that in a sec with our new slide. This is a cross-section of the roadway, as I mentioned, it's still 22 feet wide, we will have granite curb at the entrances, and we're going to have Cape Cod bituminous berm for the roadway itself. Our tree belt has 120 shade trees in it of six different types of shade trees. Rather than pack in with one or two types and possibly get hurt when disease occurs, we have six different types. The alternate bus location, here's a detail showing where the alternate bus location is going to go. Our walkway coming across here, then it's going to cut in front of the bus station for easy access so that children, or children can wait here and gain easy access to transportation right off of the roadway. This shows the bus shelter design, we still have screening along here, screening along there, vegetated screen across the street. Open space, I mentioned, 50% is required, we have 65%. Wildlife habitat impacts, there was an independent study done by New England Environmental, we saw no wildlife impacts whatsoever, there are no rare wildlife habitat species on the And wildlife corridors also have not been altered. Drainage and utilities, our drainage design has stayed the same, water from this wetland will hit this diversion berm, then be piped, and it all ends up in a detention basin with an outlet and level lip spreader. Water will be treated as per subdivision regs and regulations. There'll be an infiltration trench back here to pick up water from this end of the development, and everything will outlet down in an area where you will not basically see it. Waiver requests, I think Carolyn has a list of what waivers we are asking for, they're fairly simple, we're asking for a reduction in the radius of the roadway as it enters Glendale, it's a 10-foot existing property line radius there now, typically the town asks for 30. It does no, has no impact at all to the engineering design whatsoever. We have asked for not providing a full traffic study, but we have provided traffic counts with regard to how much traffic will increase with this development. Site distances were measured for safety purposes, this is the roadway coming out onto Route 66, we have 768 feet as you look south entering, we have 584 to the right. On Glendale, it's 700 feet as you come out and look north, and 550 as you look right. More than enough distance so that one can enter and exit safely. Mark Donald from our office is going to talk a little bit about low-impact development and ways that we have provided some, but not as much as the DPW had requested.
Again, Mark Donald, Berkshire Design. Low-impact development, we tried to incorporate this from the early stages of the project, we were looking at different ways to provide it, and low-impact development is not necessarily at the end of the project you throw in some best management scenarios, you really have to go through the design process. And one thing we looked at was trying to reduce the impervious surfaces, so we do have a narrow roadway which is more typically required. We reduced the lot size, the cluster development reduces the amount of development on the site, and part of the lit processes, you see what else you can do for alternative and low-impact developments. And one of the things we considered is impervious, a perma pavement, we looked at that, we thought that'd be a great idea, we'd love to do that for, especially a private road, even a public road, we tried to examine that. But we are in a critical area because we're adjacent to the landfill, and the EP regulations do not allow that, so we examined that and tried to do that. We looked at country drainage, country drainage is essentially trying to get rid of the pipe infrastructure, you essentially let the water run off the roadway, go across overland flow, and take care of the water quality issues that way, and decrease the amount of development associated with the hard piping of this scenario. That sounds good, but we looked at doing that, there were several reasons that we did not go that route, one was the fact that we have other criteria that we have to comply with, we have to maintain and attenuate the flows, not only from the roadway which would accept the country drainage, but also we need to collect enough water to attenuate the stormwater as well. So we needed to collect the water before we could attenuate it, we also had to treat it in accordance with the EP water guidelines, and the country drainage would not allow us to do that. Another reason we didn't do the country drainage was primarily because if we do that, essentially we wind up with a ditch on both sides of the road to collect the water. We have a situation where we have multiple driveways, if we have a ditch on the side of the road, we'd have to have a culvert on each driveway, and then the culvert has to be deep enough to accommodate culvert as well as cover over the top of the culvert as well. So the ditch would have to be two, three, four feet deep, and in addition to that, that's in the location that we have a tree belt and sidewalk, so it'd be a difficult scenario to put in there with all the different cross culverts. It also would create a problem with snowplow, when they plow the roadway, it essentially would fill the ditch with snow, we don't really have an alternative to do that. So we would like to have done that, but it didn't really seem like a viable alternative in this particular situation. And rain gardens are essentially the same type of thing, you can collect several locations for rain gardens to do the treatment, but similar to the country drainage, once you've collected it, you still have to get rid of the water, so we'd have to have a collection system to gather the water, once you went through the rain garden and still take it to a disposal site. So we'd have to have a duplicate scenario, and it doesn't really fit into it. So we did look at options to treat the water with different best management practices, but I think what we wound up with, we know it works, it satisfies all the requirements of the EP as well as the North Hampton Stormwater Regulation, so. And then, I guess in a quick summary, 24 lot proposed, a third of a mile roadway, has traffic calming measures, we have speed bumps as well as narrow pavement, a narrow roadway, has public water, has a private sanitary sewer system, a private drainage system, and has a significant amount of open space. So that's our real quick summary of the project.
Is that it from the applicant?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the choice of bituminous curbing. In my experience, it doesn't last very long once you start heading up with plows.
It doesn't, if it was a type 2 vertical curb, bituminous curb, this is a Cape Cod which is very narrow, wider, and plows have much little problem with that.
So just right.
Yeah, it rises up gradually, and it works quite well. You can also drive over it, so we don't have to worry about 24 curb cuts with curbing because of the driveways.
Right, it's not going to start disintegrating.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's important.
Okay. Just a question about lots 1 and 2, I think.
Oh, good point.
Yeah, can we talk about those?
Yes, lots 1 and 2, we are staying out of the wetland buffer, and in doing so, we have created conservation restrictions for these two lots in order to stay out of the buffer and make sure that the homeowners that live in these two lots have that restriction. So work will not be done in that areas, and there will be a legal restriction on that, so it makes these two lots smaller in size but still buildable.
So the lots are going to end, I mean, I guess looking at, the light blue to me says the lot ends at the berm, or is the lot actually extend toward the drawing?
The lot area extends toward the rear, but the berm constitutes an area of no enter, basically. So from the berm back, all this area, there will be a restriction, but it's part of the lot area in total.
So what does that mean for the owner of that lot? Does that mean they couldn't mow it, they could not put a swing set on it?
Nope.
They own it, but they can't do anything with it?
There's reservations.
There is?
Yeah, there are many places in the city where that's, and it's hard.
Well, I mean, it's passive open space, it adds value in that regard, but you just, and in fact, there are a lot of lots in the city that aren't necessarily regulated by conservation restriction, but they're in the buffer, and if people go and mow and cut the trees down, they're going to get fined.
Well, we've had those in the past, though, is where the lot ends, the lot is, the user can, the owner can mow it, put a swing set on it, but it's like, it opens up onto a conservation area. So we've talked in the past about putting fences up, or ballers, or markers, so they know they can't infringe on it. This is the first time I remember seeing a lot where your backyard is yours, but you can't do anything with it.
Well, except there'll be a berm here, so that will be sort of the physical indication of where that line is, because the berm is there to prevent water from flowing right into the basin of those houses.
I'd also like to mention, if I can, we've been speaking to this abutter that is adjacent to our lot, and we are working with them in terms of trying to figure out what type fencing can go up here to prevent people from walking onto their property, and we were concerned about wildlife habitat and so forth, so we're in negotiations as far as trying to figure out what type fence can go there, and can it, will it prevent people, but not wildlife, so we're not sure what type might go there, but we're speaking to them, and we're open to that.
Sorry, just going back to lot 1 and lot 2 again for a second, because the berm essentially cuts lot 1 in half, and a third of these is lot 2, the houses, you have to plant a house on there, the setbacks are going to be, I mean, it's only 50 feet from the road to the berm, so.
It's more than that, yeah.
Well, on the one end, it might be, but there's a 25-foot front setback, I believe, on the cluster lots.
Which, and.
It's about 50 feet on the far end, and it might go up to, say, 65 to 75 feet, but are you going to be able to hit a 25-foot setback on the front and also get the house in there, since the house, there's some usable area behind the house that doesn't go up against the berm?
It's going to be tight, there's no doubt about that. We're not sure what size house, houses, it's going to go there, it's probably going to be one of the smaller ones.
The lot 2 is, you know, if it's 75 feet from the street to the back of the berm on lot 2, you're essentially going to have a 50-foot area that you can build a house in and have some sort of usable back area.
Right, right.
So it's not a very big space.
No.
Is the street one-way or two-way?
Two-way.
And maybe, I know you guys did a quick overview, but the sides, the 100-foot, the 90-degree angle onto West Hampton Road, bus shelter, any other lot reconfiguration? You said you had to reconfigure the lots a bit?
Yes. Most of the lots were reconfigured in this area, they moved around, lot 24 used to be a little bit further south, so they're all about the same size as they were previously.
Do we want to talk, you guys have the DPW comments, and you guys, so members of the board are aware of this, typically, I think when we've seen this application before, the applicant was proposing that the city eventually takes over the road. Like many subdivisions, basically, you know, the goal is to get the city to take over the road, which means the city's responsible for plowing, not only plowing, but maintenance of utilities, the water lines, all the stuff that's on the road. The DPW said they're not taking this road. In fact, they've said it very clearly that they're never going to take this road, and in the conditions you'll see that Carolyn handed out to us tonight, one of the conditions we would have to put on this permit is that they understand that there is no way the city will ever take over maintenance, plowing, or the utilities on this road. So the homeowners association is going to be responsible not only for plowing it, but also say if the water may break, they take care of it. If utilities break, they take care of it, the city's not going to do any of it.
What's the situation on that, the DPW's reason?
Carolyn, you want to?
The main reason was that, I think sparked this, was the concern about the high groundwater on the West Hampton Road end of the project, where the water lines and a portion of the sewer, where the sewer would be, would be private in a way that was in high groundwater, and maintenance and long-term viability of those lines was a concern.
Right, so we've had, we have many situations where we have associations managing, for example, Maple Ridge Road, there's an association, and Maple Ridge, that association, all they have to do is pay the taxes on some little piece of land and maintain landscape, but the city plows it, and the city's responsible for the utilities on it. In this case, the city would never take over this road, so the homeowners association would be responsible forever.
One of the points of making it acceptable to the city is so that it's built up to the standards, the higher standards.
Well, in fact, Andrew's point, if the city was taking over this road, I think they'd have to use granite curbs the whole way.
Right. It's kind of a loophole, isn't it?
It's something to take into account, I mean, I was trying to think of a precedent again where the homeowners association's responsible for this level of management, and I think in the notes you got from Carolyn, the suggestion was that there's a management company that somehow deals with this, that the homeowners, the 26 or 24 families living in the road, might want to contract it out, have somebody else maintain this road.
So you have a similar situation at the Oaks subdivision, where the road and everything, all the infrastructure is private, and then the pathways co-housing, and the other co-housing, they're all, it's like a condominium association essentially.
You went by Oaks, you mean Emerson and Port.
Yes, Emerson and Port. So that's a full road, it's built to subdivision standards, but they, the applicant, and Wade Enthus, that was going to be entirely private road, and irrevocable covenants were written into it so that the street would never be requested for street acceptance. But it is complicated because you've got all these complicated infrastructure systems that, you know, homeowners don't necessarily know what to do, or they have public water, their first, you know, inclination is probably to call DPW. So there really should be some established mechanism for people to buy into this, to understand who they need to call, what they're calling for, and then, and have that so people aren't calling DPW to say, hey, my water line's broke, DPW's just going to turn around and say, sorry, you need to figure that one out.
Do we have authority over that?
The planning board?
Yeah.
They're offering, I mean, you have authority to put in a condition that they need to establish a system, a protocol, yes, you can do that.
Okay.
And it's really a protection of the homeowner.
Exactly.
Right, yeah. And so whoever buys into that knows exactly what they're buying into. But very much, I think, well, usually an association is part of the deed, right? It's a deed, does it go on the deed of the house?
Yeah, it would be, there'd be a master deed or a series of covenants or homeowners association, you know, grants.
Right.
As the current subdivision regulations go, then granite curbs are not required, but they are required for the city to accept the street, or?
I just want to look, you all recently changed the, in the last few years, what the requirement is, I'm just pulling that up to be sure.
And we're considering changing subdivision regulations?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think certainly in more of an urban area, you would want granite, and you wouldn't want waiver on that.
Well, I thought it was we changed the cluster regulations, that clusters have to build the roads to subdivision standards, so a cluster has to use granite.
Subdivision, you said has to match the city standard.
Right.
But it's not city standard, it's private from there.
Right, so this is a road that the city will never take over. Does that mean that?
Yeah, I have some difficulty with the idea of allowing a road that the city will not take over.
I agree.
And not having it built to city standards. I mean, I think that ultimately, 20 or 30 years down the line, even if you, I don't know, I'm just a little bit leery of the idea that we'll let it be built to substandard, but it might come back to bite us 30 years down the road.
Well, what, you know what we can do, Carolyn's looking it up, but, oh, go ahead.
The way you've changed the standard, it did go from, I mean, you had a lot of bituminous curb allowance, and I, I have this in my list of waivers, but the, for, it says specifically, all curbing and edging shall be granite and consistent with the requirements below for existing. consistent with requirements below for existing streets, and in exceptional circumstances, the planning board will consider waivers to allow concrete curbs, but never to allow bituminous curbs.
Okay, I think that's clear.
What, what was that regulation for?
Well, those are for the subdivision, those are the subdivision rules.
Right.
So, it doesn't, even if it's gonna be a private street, you still want it to be built to a standard.
Correct.
And, so just because it's private doesn't mean a lesser standard is necessarily appropriate. It's not, it's not appropriate, I mean, you all, because, again, you're thinking about the long term, and particularly if the, if the homeowners are gonna be on the hook for repairs and that kinda thing, bituminous breakdown, breaks down much more quickly than either concrete or simply granite, is the gold standard, essentially, so, um-
Every study I've ever seen says that in the end, granite is cheaper.
So, play a trick.
Doesn't mean.
Out of all of this, does it mean that they can't put bituminous curbing?
Well, I guess that's the, I think what Carolyn's saying was, was there a request for a waiver, so they could use bituminous?
I didn't see that officially requested as a waiver.
But it's also-
Right, so I guess, one of these for you guys to consider is the fact that the zoning is written such that you guys need-
Subdivision.
I'm sorry, the subdivision rules are written, you need granite curbing along the, like this street.
I didn't look at it either, but I have a question, it is, did we shift to OSR criteria, or are we still a subdivision?
This is still, this is a subdivision and a special permit, and the special permit is for the cluster of the units in the open space, but it's still, it's two permits.
So, you, so you're doing the special permit for cluster, but really sort of abandoning the subdivision, 'cause the subdivision would require the street to be built to city standards with granite curbs, but I was unaware of a requirement for an OSR to have that, I just don't-
No, 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 I think that, well, there's another provision that says, if you were doing a cluster without subdivision, without a subdivision, we still want you to build sidewalks and things like that to the subdivision standard. That's not the situation in this case, but this would be sort of a private condominium development, like, I mean, the first one that came into play, I think, was Beaverbrook, and then the one off of North Street. There wasn't a new subdivision street created, but we wanted the sidewalks and the curbing to be-
Well, Ice Pond was a combination of the two. Ice Pond had some lots, by the way.
I think Ice Pond was before we did that.
Right, Ice Pond has some lots with the conservation restrictions on the back of them also.
Right, but that's a subdivision street, too.
But it is a subdivision street, that's right, it was built to city standards, and the city accepted it after it was constructed.
Right.
But I think one of the things we did with, with clusters after Ice Pond, that we changed the rules with clusters, now clusters, even though the city will never take over the streets, we're still having clusters built to city standards.
Well, there are two, you can do a cluster without creating a street, so that's what, I mean-
Right, it's, it's, right, right, but when the cluster creates the street, the cluster has to build a street to city standards.
No, a, a city street.
We want all, we want all infrastructure that deals with roads and sidewalks to be built to one standard, so we, we use the subdivision standard, so that was changed in the zoning, so now the zoning reflects, no matter what kinda project, reflects the same standards as in subdivision. But, we can forget about that for, at this point, because this is subdivision, this is filed as subdivision, it's a new street, but it also happens to have, the land use pattern is coming in as a cluster special.
I understand, but the, the, at the last minute, the DPW said, even though it's filed as a subdivision, and preliminary subdivision plans were approved, which would be a city street, the DPW said, we don't want the street, we don't ever want the street.
Right, DPW does that consistently.
I understand that, they don't wanna be in charge of anything, I understand that well. But, but they decided at the last minute, after the preliminary was approved and everything else, they just wouldn't take the street.
You know what, I think I'm, just, I wanna hear for one, one second, 'cause I, I, we're here for the public, we know we can't vote tonight, um, I think what we're gonna have to, you know, we have this issue, are they allowed to use bituminous on this road?
Subdivision standards say no, I mean, you can waive any of the standards, but it's very unclear about-
So, they would have to apply, your understanding is they have to apply to a waiver, if they wanna use bituminous curbing on this street?
That was not specifically requested.
Okay, so let's do this, we, we're gonna, we're gonna continue, you're gonna have a chance to respond to that, either at the next meeting, or with Carolyn in between, so let's leave that as an open issue right now, that might be, and move on with the next thing, okay? Mark?
Just a quick question for, just a precedent, this, the, the trigger for here for DPW not wanting to take it was the high water, what was the trigger at Emerson Way?
There were some other waivers, um, I think the street width, and the, the way that it was, um, it was in, I, I can't remember precisely all the details of that one, but it was essentially one-way in-street with emergency egress, and it, and so at that time, there was a concern, um, there were, there were a couple of other waivers on the, on the standards, that ultimately, then the, then the applicant said, okay, we're gonna propose this as a private one.
And I think Emerson was originally permitted a long time ago.
Two thousand two.
Two thousand two, probably before most, I'm afraid anybody-
Before we changed, I was just here for that.
Yeah, but most of us, I don't think any of the Emerson's were on the board.
Okay.
We know, uh, anything else from the board, 'cause we can hear for the public? So, we're gonna open a public comment, before we do, um, you know, this is, I think, the third hearing on this, we know we're gonna have another one, um, so, I'd like you, you know, we're gonna come up to the podium, state your name and address, have your piece, try not to repeat something that everybody else has said, you know, it's, it's already quarter of eight, we're gonna try and move this along, you know, have your say, but, um, we're gonna be here again, you know, at another time, so, um, Karen, good woman.
City Councilor, Mary Ann LaBarge, um, I have to say, there has been some improvement going on with communication, um, with the abutters. Over by, um, lot number eleven, there's like, two white blocks, now, I think there is an agreement, if I'm not right or not, with Marcia and Jerry, that that property, if this plan does go through, it would be theirs, correct?
Yes, there's, there's, there's an, yes, there's an agreement between the-
You can address your questions to us, and then we can reflect on it.
I'll respond for that.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm hap-
You want, you allow me to respond?
Yes, please.
There is an agreement with the property owners to provide some fencing and some other transfers, which is an agreement between them, it's contingent on approval, but if it's approved, that, I believe they're satisfied with those conditions, Mary, I mean, they signed the agreement, so I believe that's-
To purchase lot eleven?
No, not to purchase lot eleven.
Oh, I thought you just said, the agreement is to purchase lot eleven.
No, it's being given to them.
It's being given to them?
That's right.
No, a piece of land, not a lot.
A piece of land, between-
Between eleven and their property.
Oh, okay, the way I heard you say it is, they're getting lot seven, I think we all heard, they're getting lot seven.
I said beside lot eleven.
Oh, beside lot eleven.
Yes, okay. Anyways, I'm very happy about that, because these are dire abutters, which, the road is gonna go between their home and Mrs. Brown's house, so, I think that compromise is well deserved to go into Marcia and Jerry. Um, I'm very happy and pleased to hear about coming out of Glendale Road, or coming into Glendale Road, and the house directly across the street, maybe somebody can answer this, I think I'm hearing about arborettes being placed in front of that house, what the size of those arborettes will be, because I know cars coming out of there, the headlights are gonna be directly to that house, so I'm hoping that they're like, six feet and up, because that's what's gonna be needed. Um, I'm very concerned about lots one and two, I wouldn't buy those lots, if I can't work on my own property, I have a problem with that, and I'm hoping that this is really stressed to these people, because I do know I'm having a problem right now on my ward on Austin Circle where, they bought homes years ago, now they're wetlands, and they're being told they cannot work on their property, they have to go to conservation, and get a special permit in order to work on their property. So, I'm a little concerned about house number one and two, of the amount of land that these people will have. Um, I'm glad to hear that there will be communication as far as, um, a protocol, I think this is extremely valuable, that this be placed for recommendations. Um, I also am very pleased, when I stressed last time about West Hampton Road, about a bus shelter being placed in that site, and I said it was too dangerous, I'm glad that's being removed. Do I agree with this plan? I don't. In my heart, I think it's huge, I think twenty-four houses, I'm really concerned that I do have some residents on Glendale Road who are special needs, and that there's no sidewalks on that road, and I care about their quality of life. I'm also hearing about the city of North Hampton, the Board of Public Works, saying that they do not ever, and never will make that a city street, I can see why, because it is a high-water level area of where they're talking about. We can't stop the development, but I have to say that the owner has been working very closely with the abutters, and that's important to me. I'm also hearing tonight about wildlife, that there'll be trails for them, I disagree with that, I've seen so much development on my ward, and being told, oh yes, the wildlife is gonna stay, they don't, okay? They have no place to go, they move on, and we don't see them anymore. I used to have deer in back of our yards, we don't have them anymore. I know on Glendale Road, I've seen turkeys there, with Wayne Biden on-site, looking at the property, I'm talking about thirteen to fifteen turkeys coming out of, and back of Marcia's house, crossing, crossing the street, deers, bears, we have it out there. I, I'm just so concerned about the wildlife. That's where my concerns are, okay? I also, I'm a little concerned of hearing tonight about the traffic study that was done, that there was not a full-blown traffic study, why not? We're looking at an intersection of Route sixty-six, West Farms Road, and Glendale Road, ever since they have reconstructed Route sixty-six, it's a, it's unbelievable, it's a racetrack out there. I'm very concerned about that intersection, so, me as a councilor, I need proof that there will be safety at that intersection, because even now, where we live, like Frandy and I and that, we just had a huge accident in front of our house, knocked down trees and everything, it's like, I'm concerned about that intersection, and why it's not being mandatory of a full-blown traffic study. Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I looked at the plans, the, the trees, the, are six to eight feet, they're, for the plans, across. Oh, oh, sorry, gentleman in the back, actually, you were, what was first last?
My name is Al Champagne, eleven ninety-four West Hampton Road, I have a couple of questions. First of all, if this is a private road, when it's plowed, where's the snow going? Can't push it out on sixty-six or Glendale, so what happens then? And also, on the, uh, homeowners association, what happens when you only have a partial of these lots occupied, who pays if they have to have anything repaired? You're gonna have four or five families doing it? How does that work?
But, uh, so actually, I've heard, uh, two of the questions around, I know in other associations, the developer's often responsible until you get a critical mass of-
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if you guys have a number, when the association takes over, is it after the twentieth lot, after the fifteenth?
Yeah, we submitted, we submitted a draft, the covenants in that, I mean, it has to be revised, because you're switching to a private road now.
Right, I, there's, there's a number written there, afterwards, that-
Yes, yes.
There are certain thresholds where the association takes over. About the snowplow, you know, my guess is, you know, we plow alongside the street, just like it would be anyway.
But you can't push it out onto the public roads.
Oh, no, 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 you can't, just like you-
Can't do that in the driveway in North Hampton?
Pardon?
Can't do that in the driveway.
No, you can't push it out, you can't push it out in the street, but when you're plowing to the intersection, you have to plow that snow someplace, so.
Right, so, uh, Ben?
Marcia Fellows, one, two, three, Glendale Road, um, I've been in close contact with Steve, he's been very kind to us, um, the drainage scares me, if anybody has gone out and seen the markings, have you all gone out and seen, you see where our driveway is, ten feet away, and, of course, the snow will be plowed on either side of Megs or our property, that's where the snow would go. The drainage scares me, I, I heard him, there was three different concepts, if you see in front of my house, I have a huge puddle that everybody hits, and the water goes over the fence, where the new, uh, school bus stop is going to be, it puddles there, there's a gigantic puddle, so, if you notice the road, is, you have to peek it, it goes, all right, so on the side, I'm gonna have the rainwater, and, and in front, I have tremendous puddle, enough where I had to build the driveway up, 'cause it was washing it out, so we have a quick downpour, all that water puddles there, and listening to his drainage, and upkeep of this road, I may be flooded out where I never was before, I've never had a drop of water in my basement, but where's that water going to go? It, it sounds so unclear about the drainage, and I've asked the D, Department of Public Works to do something with, at the frontage of my house, and when they resurfaced the driveway, they just went over a big hole, and so it, it's a massive amount of water, if you ever go after a rainstorm, you'd see how much water, where it just washes over the fence, and now you're taking away the one area the water runs to, and if no one maintains, if something breaks down, I, we're gonna have, on both sides of us, water coming in that we never had before. So, Mr. Willner has agreed to fix the drainage in front of my house, but you're taking away places where it would be able to soak into, so that's my problem now, is the drainage, I mean, I had multiple problems, uh, with the development, but, you know, I've been offered all these things, but it's not worth it if I'm gonna lose usage of my property, because it's too wet. Uh, three feet from our shed, there's a big puddle, and it actually runs into his property, 'cause it has no place else to go, 'cause it's coming off my property, is, my rainwater's going someplace, and yeah, it's going on his property, I approached him, I showed him, he said, yeah, he'd fix it, but, boy, I'm not sure what your drainage is gonna be, and, and if these curbing's break down, that's gonna be beside our houses, it's gonna look terrible, and if no one's maintaining it, because, one, they may not have the money to, and what would get fixed first, the pipe or the curbing, or the landscaping? So, thusly, that area between my neighbor and myself could look pretty trashy come thirty years. Thank you.
Do you guys wanna respond to the drainage?
Uh, the, the curbing at this area where Marcia was speaking of, will be granite curbing as per, uh, North Hampton's standards. Uh, the drainage in front of her house, Mr. Willner has offered to, uh, fix that, all, all the water from the roadway along here is gonna be going into an underground piping system, and eventually, it's gonna pipe down and end up into our detention basin, so, none, none of the water from our development is gonna leave, um, from the roadway and go out onto Glendale. We're capturing it all and dumping it into our basin, so, I, I don't see the drainage, at least for our roadway and for the front, um, being, being an issue, if there are, are drainage problems on her property now, in the rear, uh, you know, we, we can't really help that, but roadway-wise, and in front, next to her driveway, we, we offer to, uh, fix that.
Just a little elaboration, Edward Etheridge of North Hampton, um, the lot that Council LaBarge was referring to is ten, not eleven, which is where Marcia and Geraldine, is that, that's correct, I think, right? And, and, and we did work out an agreement with them, which they signed in support, for their support of the project, which we would deal with that drainage, deed them a strip of land, cut down some trees they want, cut down, plant some additional trees, and install a fence, but we have a very detailed and specific agreement with them for their support of the project, which does address those. As Peter said, the drainage there, from the road, the water's not gonna turn around and flow uphill to their house, uh, their water is still gonna come to the roadway, and now we're gonna have to deal with it, comes, it comes on to the property of, of this development, but they have plans under the stormwater management to deal with the, the drainage from their property. So, there are a number of other things that, that mitigate it there. The other issue was, Council LaBarge had talked to both Peter Wells and me, not only several times today, but even tonight, um, the properties along where the septic and the drainage ditch are, you can see there's a path to give access down to there, um, which is for repair and servicing, but it's possible it would be used by people to access the open space or for other things, and the neighbor who lives down there is concerned that people would then, uh, once they're in that open area, come on to her property there, so she's requested some fencing along there. We're agreeable to some type of fencing, uh, that would keep people from going on, we just remind the board, you know, you can't serve all masters here, that's gonna cut off wildlife, um, access when you put in a fence there that would keep people out, so it's sort of a question of, you want the turkeys walking in your yard, or you want the turkeys walking in your yard? But anyway, as, we're, we're perfectly amenable to some condition that the board would think appropriate, or that we can work out with the neighbors, a fence is not an issue, I just bring it to the board's attention, which you probably would've paid attention to anyway, but, but that is the issue, we don't have a problem with that. Uh, as far as the association goes, um- As far as the association goes, there is a draft association filed already. You're correct, the developer retains control and responsibility until a certain point in terms of number of lot sales. Association has to be formed. They are all over the city. There are fewer in terms of subdivision associations, but there are more in terms of condominium associations. For Alderbury's projects, Bear Hill has an association to be responsible for. Ice Pond has an association. Not only are they responsible for certain things, but they have certain rules. I remember after Ice Pond started, somebody was parking a tractor trailer up there, which of course was not allowed under the regulations. But they had a procedure by which the managers could take care of that. Someone wanted to put in a pool. They had to get permission for their fence and their pool because that's in the association document. So I think the people who live in these places, they're... I don't wanna say they're relatively new because they existed for centuries in common scheme developments, but they've become much more complicated these days. But people are getting accustomed to them as they're getting accustomed to condominiums. And some people take them very seriously. I attended a number of meetings at the Ice Pond Association when they were trying to sort out how to enforce their regulations and their fees and how they worked. And I think they've gotten a real good hand up there. It is part of being a community. I mean, that's one of the things you're discussing here is, at what point do you leave the community by saying, we're not gonna be responsible for streets, we're starting to make everything private? You start to lose the idea of community when you do that and put everything on everybody else. I know it's become an issue in Florida in land use management where all the subdivisions become gated communities that people hide behind their gates and everything is private. And not only does it raise issues about whether you're a community anymore, but it raises tax issues because those people have come to the assessors in Florida with a number of cases, which said, what are typically municipal services are not provided to these homes. So their tax valuation is significantly impacted as a result of that. So it has impacts when you begin to go down that road. May take burden off of city services one place, but you pay for it elsewhere, both in terms of a society and in terms of tax revenues and other things. The reason we don't have a waiver for private OSR is because this was a subdivision until the city said it wouldn't take the street. We needed a special permit. But once the city says you don't need a street, you then have to file the waivers to do that. But this is a recent turn of events. I will work that out with the planning department. We'll come to closure on those rates. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, go on.
Okay. Hi, Mimi Rogers, ninety-seven Glendale Road. Couple of things I wanna touch on, but I do just wanna address the thing with the private ways. I tend every Board of Public Works meeting, so I know that this is a really serious issue for the city. And as a matter of fact, there are tons of streets right now that actually are private ways that the city's been plowing for years. And then it's a matter of, does the city have the street, does it not? And it's gonna be a huge undertaking on the part of the city to actually determine if they are, then the cost of applying for it and the cost of all the different regulations that the city's gonna have to go through. And it's gonna, it's a huge mess. And ask a member of the Board of Public Works about it, they'll give you any earful. But the point is, I can understand why they're gun shy to wanna accept any road and to be very specific right now, we're not gonna accept any road in the future. I think that because this has kind of blindsided them from many, many years in the past of all these roads that are actually private ways that they've been taken care of and it's a mess. But I just wanted to point that out, that that might be one of the reasons why they're beyond the water, that they're just a little like being very definitive because for future purposes. My other concern is the road that's gonna come out onto Glendale Road. And I'm not sure what, how the traffic study goes. I mean, I walk by where I see it marked off and it just, to me, as a layperson, seems very narrow. Glendale Road has a large traffic of cyclists, believe it or not, who go riding there on the weekdays and on the weekends and they are like bunches. You know, it's not just one or two, but it's like, you know, a group of cyclists out there. And I just see how that road comes out and to me, it seems like a car would, you know... I get concerned about how that would be an impact. So I would recommend, I mean, if there's some sort of a study on that. But also the fact that there are no sidewalks. I mean, I walk on Glendale Road and it's, to me, it's more narrow. I'm much happier getting down to Route sixty-six because it's wider, there's a bike lane, it's more comfortable, you know, as safe as you can feel with people zipping by. But it makes me concerned the way that that road comes out. It just, you know, it's, people come out of their driveways much slower, they creep out because it's your driveway. But when it's a road and you're coming up, if you're doing twenty, you know, or twenty-five miles and you're coming up, you know, you might not stop. And, you know, I know you have a stop sign there, but I'm a little concerned about it just because I walk there, my daughter walks there, people are cycling, little kids are riding their bikes, elderly people are riding their bikes, walking. So I am somewhat concerned about that. I don't know if they're gonna definitely do the traffic study or not, but I did wanna weigh in on that. So, thank you.
Brigitte Holt, and I'm on one twenty-six Glendale Road. And I have a question and a comment. So my house is, would be the little square that you had in your other map behind the arborvitae that you've addressed. And I wanted to thank the project for considering my request to give some shelter between the headlights that are going to go right into my living room. And with a question I had about that is, when I'm looking at that, it may just be the effect that this is just, you know, you're just kinda doing the little green trees there. But from what I'm understanding about the way the road is relative to my house, it looks as though those trees are almost in front of my driveway and, which would not be good for me to pull out of my driveway. But my point is this, is what I'm thinking is that since it's gonna be a fairly dark area, cars are gonna come out and they're gonna have their brights in and, you know, the brights of their cars. And so I wanna make sure that those trees are extending really well in front of that road and so that it's really gonna shelter my house well, you know, away from those headlights. I'm not quite sure how that's planned.
Yeah, come on, you can respond. The only thing about the, I'm looking at the plan and you guys keep saying arborvitae, but the plans say Canadian hemlock. I don't know if that's an issue, but...
Yeah, that's what the plans say, but if she wants arborvitae, we can put in arborvitae.
Okay, you just might wanna make the limit.
And in terms of the actual location of where those get planted, what we can do is when the plants are delivered, we'll work with you and we'll hand place them.
Okay, super.
And we'll put them in so that we can visually see that it is gonna...
That's right.
So we'll make note of that.
Yeah, I remember we had a conversation this summer about the hemlock versus arborvitae and I, I think it's, I don't know.
Personal choice.
We could talk more about that.
I just wondered if there was an issue about, no, I think there was an issue of also, maybe this was where the conversation went in about salt from the roads, from the plows and some trees are more sensitive to that and I'm not...
But if you guys wanna, whatever you guys wanna agree and you put on the plans, that would be fine with us.
And...
No, Andrew. DC has this thing about arborvitae.
I would leave it up to the homeowner.
We should talk, maybe, and it's our education. Anyway, we have, we have an arborist down the street, I'll consult with him. And the comment I had was, was actually echoing some of the things that Marion LaVerge said. It's about the environmental impact study that was done. And all I wanted to say is that we don't just have wildlife there. Wildlife can be squirrels, that's what people have in cities, we have those too. But we have things like bobcats, we have deer, we have turkey. Bobcats are really precious, they're rare. We have foxes, we have wildlife, real nice wildlife. We have bears, some people may not like those, I think they're great. Marcia and Geraldine thinks they're great. And so to say, and I understand that it is very obvious that it is going to change the character of the wildlife. So when they do an impact statement, I don't know what that company did as an impact statement and environmental impact study, what criteria they used. But I don't think we should just, and we should just accept that the development's, you know, is probably gonna happen, it is going to change the wildlife. But we shouldn't, you know, the project shouldn't hide behind a statement like, there will be no impact on the wildlife, sort of to appease your conscience, because that is simply nonsense.
I'm Amy Holick Dunn from one eighty-three Glendale Road. And I'm probably echoing a lot of what others have said. Peter mentioned in his remarks that there is no rare wildlife and the corridors won't be impacted. And Mo and I were just comparing notes. And we've lived there our whole lives and we never saw the level of wildlife that's there now because it's all been forced down off of mineral hills with the development up there. So there is a lot more wildlife there, deer. There's, my mom's flock of turkeys that come through her yard every day. So they, the wildlife certainly does exist and we certainly wanna protect that. I do have concerns about the traffic studies. After forty years, we're finally, finally getting, about to get rid of all the dump traffic and now we're gonna have new cut-through traffic. So I think the neighborhood is very concerned about the impact of traffic on the way this will create a cut-through. And I do wanna, we're the homeowners that had the mention of the fence and I do wanna clarify that that's as much a property line delineation as anything because when the perk tests were initially done for this property, they were done on our property. So we want to be absolutely sure that there is a delineation of the property line, a very clear delineation, and some sort of fence to keep the turkeys and the turkeys out. And my final, my final comment is about the DPW being reluctant to take over the road due to the high water table. I am concerned about that water retention area and what that might do to force moisture into what is a pretty dry area on our property. When Glendale Road was repaved, it created a huge puddle that's really a terrible hazard for my eighty-five-year-old mom at the end of her driveway. And I'm concerned about, as Marcia mentioned too, the amount of water that's gonna be running off of this site. So I just wanna be absolutely sure that the water retention area is not forcing water onto property that has previously not had a water problem. Thank you.
You wanna respond to that at all?
I guess the question was making sure that the water is not moving water... Right, yeah, I guess as far as the water, again, the water that falls on the site today is gonna be the same as it is tomorrow, so the rainfall is gonna be essentially the same. We're not gonna generate more total runoff or total additional water. And we sort of tried to emulate the existing drainage patterns and the location of the detention basin, they say detention retention basin. And that detention basin essentially fills up and drains out and goes down to the stream as it currently, water currently does. So we're not really taking water and shifting it over to the east. We're essentially maintaining the water, actually, if anything else, we're taking water from the Glendale area and shifting it towards the west a little bit. So we're actually taking water away from that location and draining it down towards near the brook and that's at a lower elevation than the Glendale area, Glendale Road area.
Thank you. My name's Maureen Bowler and I'm representing one sixty-five Glendale Road. And I have just a few questions. My first question is if somebody could give us an idea of what type of price range these houses are going for?
Excuse me, I have the other, it's nothing, it doesn't, there's no impact on our permit with the prices, so...
Do they have garages?
Again, that's not...
If they don't have garages, where would people be putting their snowmobiles and boats and all this? I'm getting to the point that this is a project and I know it looks, you know, it's pretty cute now, but I'm just trying to get to the fact that we're a rural area. And to me, this cluster of homes, I think if there's any way that the city can downsize this in any possibility, so I'm requesting that you vote no on your variances and waivers, if at all possible, and try and limit the scope of this project so that it could shrink a bit. If they don't have garages, maybe make them homes with garages so people could put their boats and snowmobiles in such a way so that it would continue to look nice. I'm also concerned too about the homeowners association, because I'm understanding then too that they would be required to take care of that retention holding tank as well as the communal septic leach field. Is that true? So then my concern is, as with others, on some of the association is, if we end up with issues, because that's the end I'm coming in at, with issues with the septic system, is the city, the city, it sounds like it's kind of washing their hands of all of this and we'd be working with the association to resolve these problems? Okay? So I, nobody will even give me, just to satisfy my curiosity, on a price range? Are we talking three hundred thousand dollar homes here?
You could ask them if that...
I mean, it might not be relevant, I'm curious.
At this point, we're looking at it in the low three hundreds, yes.
Okay, and would it be horrible if somebody shared with me if there's having garages?
We anticipate having garages.
Okay.
Yeah. Whether they stay garages afterwards or not.
Well, you're right, that's a whole nother thing. But I guess we take that up with the homeowners association then? So a question for you is, what happens if the homeowners association doesn't have the funds to maintain the roads and the sidewalk and the drainage things and the catchwater basin and the septic system? What then happens?
Do you restrict your question for... Yeah, oh, sorry, Ed, thank you.
Just to assure you, even though it's an association, if you have a septic system, the Board of Health always has jurisdiction over it. It has to be functioning, it has to work. And if it's not functioning, the people have to move out of their house because they're not inhabitable. But it's not like you've deferred, you lose all of your control, you still have quite a lot of control. And if you put water somewhere else, if the drainage doesn't work, as all the engineers and the city has viewed it does, if water's flowing somewhere else, that's a trespass. You not only have private actions against the association, but you could look to the Conservation Commission for how that's been redirected or whatever. I mean, just because it's a private road doesn't mean the city, it hasn't become a private country. The septic system is still under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health.
Right, but the city would never go in and fix it.
See, we're not going to fix it, no, but the homeowners wouldn't be able to live in their houses if it doesn't work. I think that might bring them to the table.
Just to clarify, even if the city, if there's gonna be an irremovable covenant about the street, even if the street were to be public, the sewer, the private septic system was always designed to be privately maintained. So that wasn't just the road issue, isn't the thing that triggered all these restrictions?
And then I was a little confused, the meeting, that was in June, the last meeting. I thought that there was no traffic study, that in lieu of a traffic study, there was some money transpiring to the city. I remember somebody saying it was very complicated, has something changed on that or was there, it made it sound like now there was a traffic study done.
Not a full-blown one. There are two, there's always a traffic mitigation requirement for whatever project, residential, commercial in the city unless you're in certain districts, it's defined in the ordinances. So traffic mitigation is required regardless of whether a full traffic study is done. The issue is, you know, traffic study, a full-blown traffic study will tell you from point A to point Z where the projected trips are going to be going in and out of the subdivision. We have a pretty standard idea for single-family homes about where, how many trips are generated from a single-family home. And this is a relatively small subdivision and construction project, so it's not, there's, it doesn't really necessitate a complicated traffic study. The trips are gonna be distributed generally because there's, it's not a dead-end street, so there's a way for trips to sort of fill out both entrances or either entrance. So that was really the issue, is the need and what you would gain by spending time on evaluating traffic relative to the answers you get. I mean, it's a pretty small project as compared to a large retail project on King Street or a much bigger...
Well, again, we're rural, so to me, this is a huge, it may be a small for some people, but it's huge to a lot of us out on Glendale Road and Route sixty-six. I just wanna go on record that I'm extremely concerned, traffic study or no traffic study, two particular areas, coming down what we would call King's Hill, so coming from West Hampton Huntington down the major hill, that's a major truck route and everything, it's a major highway now. Those trucks are gonna be coming down there, which they do, and they're gonna come around the corner, whether there's footage there or not, I think that's gonna be a very, very bad area for traffic. And with the trees and the arborvitae and the fencing and such coming out on Glendale Road and, believe me, I feel, people need to do what they need to do to protect, you know... know, lights and everything coming in. But I'm afraid, I'm giving my best guess at looking at this visually, but that might not be the easiest peek out of that area too with fencing and arborvitae's there and such too. So, I just want to go on record that I'm very concerned about the traffic coming down King's Hill in particular and both, in both directions on Glendale Road. So, in closing, I'm glad people did mention the animals, because even though they're, I guess the conservation area said there is none there, we all know that there is, so I'm glad people are at least thinking about that because we're not downtown. We went out in this area for the rural life of North Hampton. And having lived there for fifty-two years before the dump and the whole nine yards, this, you know, it had a potential of being a really great area of town as well too, is the sense of your Sylvester Roads and Kennedy Roads and such before all this development went down. So, I thank you for your time, and I would hope that you would consider limiting the scope of this project as much as you can, which would minimize the impact on all of us. So, please do not grant any extra waivers if you don't have to or variances, and maybe we could get the twenty-four units down to eighteen or even fifteen, which would be in my ideas, still large for the area, but less of an impact on us. So, thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Blake Simmons, ten ninety-five West Hampton Road. We've only been there about five years, but we live, you know, at the top part of the curve where the green meets the road and stuff like that. We, in the past, we just lived through the sixty-six projects, so one of them was inherited, a twelve thousand square foot swamp in our front yard. So, my biggest concern is water. I mean, there's no, we own actually that white part, part of the triangle on this side of the road. So, we're, you know, I drive the tractor through there, I mow it, I, you know, I haven't farmed in the past, but we, you know, we tend to keep turning it over and planting stuff there and stuff like that. But we already have standing water. I mean, we have three feet of water on the other side of the street. I mean, there's no, you can't tell me that the water's not there. It all comes into our front yard and then drains across the street. And I can tell you that everybody around there has sump pumps, everybody. I mean, I can tell you multiple times, just, you know, how about October thirty-first snowstorm, we lost power for five days. I went to every single one of my neighbors, I have about two or three generators, and I can tell you right now, I spend more time driving around, pumping out people's basements, helping my neighbors from flooding out than, than I, you know, I think I'd spend at work that week, because the water is just, it's unrelenting. I've gone through sump pumps, I've bought, you know, the best sump pumps, so my biggest thing is water. The second thing is, right across the street where it comes on at sixty-six, there's a guy there named Mr. Doyle, really nice guy, elderly guy, we're talking about where you're going to push the snow. The guy already can't see out of his driveway. He's, him and his wife have already gotten almost hit numerous times. So, that's an unbelievably dangerous curve. They widened the road, they made it, it's supposedly twenty-five miles an hour. It's, it's like a superhighway. People come off the curve, they stomp on it, sports cars, motorcycles, logging trucks, I mean, just go in there and hang out. Go in my yard, sit in the dry wind and watch for a little while, see what happens. There's been two very serious accidents in the past year alone up on top of the hill, where, I mean, this road, this road is forty feet wide, and these people are coming downhill. There should be no reason they should run into each other, and there's been two serious accidents. One just happened less than a month ago. So, I can't imagine letting people entry, enter onto the road right there. I just, it doesn't make any sense. But, I mean, you know, you got to do what you got to do, but I can't, you know, and the next thing is lots one and two. You know, they're going to be so small, you're going to put a house in there, they're going to have no land, you know, and then never mind that, where, like my, again, where's all the water going to go? It's going to, my fear is it's going to keep filling up my land. My fear is instead of me having an area a hundred feet wide by two or, you know, two or three feet deep, it's going to be two hundred feet wide, and it's going to be four feet deep in the middle of my field. And I'm going to have a pond in front of me, and I'm going to have a pond across the street, which, what does it do, just makes more water problems for me. So, I, I mean, I think, I think that's really it. My, my biggest concern is water and the traffic, and, you know, I don't know how much time is everyone spent up there. And the next thing is, take it from me, I've been outside a lot, I, I'm outside a lot with my dogs across the street, the wildlife, I mean, you just, you know, you laugh, you know, we all laugh about the turkeys and stuff, but we've counted forty turkeys in our side yard, and they all come from my yard, and they come right over to the dump, and they all make their way. Bobcats, I've never seen bobcats before in my life in the past five years. I've seen, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty times, just this past week, we're all sitting on it on a Saturday afternoon, no rhyme or reason, a bobcat walks through our front yard, you know? So, the deers, you know, the deer, the moose, the whole nine yards, they're, it's all there. So, you know, I just see, there's a lot of lots being slammed into there. Never mind the fact, I'll go into the fact that I own land up on top of the hill that I'm trying to sell for building lots right now, and I made mine. We made them four and a half acres, four point three and three point nine acres. I could have went here and did exactly what they're trying to do, slam a bunch of homes into a small area, walk out of here and never look back. But, you know, I live there, and I want, I don't want it to look, you know, I don't want it to look like that, but I mean, if they do it by the rules and you guys allow them to do it, that's what it's going to end up looking like. So, that's really my main concerns. Thanks.
Thanks. Oh, sorry, your next term.
First, I want to thank all my neighbors for everything.
Sorry, your name and address?
Jim Odell, one oh nine Glendale. I want to thank everybody for their concerns and everything, because I agree with everybody in here. My property is that big rectangle, the white one up at the top right. The reason why we moved there was because of the wildlife and the privacy. And hopefully, this isn't going to impede with the wildlife. I had sixty turkeys in my yard this morning, and it's gorgeous. It's the best thing you've ever seen. Deer, bobcats, everything. Hopefully, this doesn't impede with the wildlife because they're gorgeous. Privacy, if this does go in, I want to make a formal request to get a fence like you're going to offer my neighbor here, along the, the two edges of the rectangle. I'm asking for some kind of privacy fence, some split, split, I don't know, doesn't have to be stockade or anything like that, just some kind of fencing that keeps the human turkeys out of our yards.
Yep.
Okay. Somebody else, do you guys want to respond? Is that you or... Oh.
Hi, Meg Brown, one thirty-seven Glendale. I'm the house to the south of the, where the road is, and I really still am very concerned about cars coming down, and that's right where we park our cars, right on that corner right there. And I'm very concerned that someone's just going to turn the car right into our driveway all the time. It's just going to be, might as well not even be a driveway there because it's just going to be a cutoff. And that's where we park. And so, say someone puts up a fence, I'm also concerned if it's private, what if we don't see a car coming and it crashes into the fence? And, I mean, it sounds silly, but it was in the paper yesterday, somebody's...
I'm sorry, which fence are you talking about?
If there was a fence between my yard and the road, and a car came in, we wouldn't be able to get out of the way because we wouldn't know it was there. We wouldn't know it was coming. If there was a fence up...
Here?
Yes, if there was a, no, to...
Here?
Yes. If there was a fence there for privacy, which it probably should be, but if a car comes down the street, we're not going to be able to get out of the way if we, if we see, don't see the car coming. And I have two kids and a dog and my husband and me, and we don't want to get killed. And we're, I'm really scared that the driveway is just, just, not going to be our driveway anymore. What are we supposed to do?
Lynn Simmons, ten ninety-five West Hampton Road, and I just have a couple of questions. I'm assuming all these homes are going to be built with sump pumps because the groundwater's so high, and I want to know where they're going to drain, like if the drainage is going to be built into the drainage that's proposed, so that they're not draining onto the lots or the neighbors' lots or the open space that's there, just because the water is such an issue. And then I want to know if there's going to be public access to the open space, and if so, where it's going to be and where any proposed parking is for it. Already, when the development was being permitted, or not permitted, but the plans were being drawn up, everyone was parking on our property because it was the straightest shot in, it was the safest place to park. So, we would repeatedly go out there and just say what, you know, what's going on, making sure they weren't hunters because our property's posted no hunting. And I want to make sure that the public isn't doing the same thing, because I don't want to be liable if somebody gets hurt or trips and falls or whatever. So, I want to make sure that that's taken into account if there is public access to that open space. And I want to know if this project is approved, when it will be breaking ground, just so we can have some expectation of, you know, when that would be happening. And if the same developer's going to be used for all the lots, just to ensure that they're all built to the same standard.
So, a couple of questions. I think you guys addressed the drainage. If, some pumps are all draining into, they're not, you're not blowing water out into people's lawns?
Correct.
They're going into the same water system that's going to drain into the retention pond?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The next question about the public asset access and parking?
To the open space that's proposed, because if I'm not, I could be wrong, but the ridge had some trails that were proposed, and they were supposed to meet up with this development, possibly. So, if people are using that to...
So, where?
And the other thing is, there's a...
And where would the trail go from? Where would it start at the point?
It was on one of the iterations. That's part of the traffic mitigation.
It's not sheep, it means four. Not P four, but sheep four? P four, P four, sheep P four?
Go down your spine, try.
Yes, okay. So, this is... Yep. Oh, okay. So, where's the access point, where's the entry point?
Well, the applicant, as part of traffic mitigation, has offered to give the, an E, a public easement to connect through the property there up to that point where the detention drainage line is. And then there was, and then there's access across the way. So, it's envisioned that, you know, residents in the neighborhood as well as Glendale Road or anywhere else could walk there on the sidewalks, come into the open space, you know, go, you could walk then...
Into my backyard.
You can go that.
So, they're being, connect, you're talking about connecting from here across here?
Yeah.
To that, this is what, a trail that exists?
It comes, there's no wetland crossing yet, I think, but yes, it exists down to the wetland.
To, where's it start?
At the ridge.
Oh, sorry.
Which is, you know, at the, at the top of the road.
So, I'm just anticipating that there will be, over the years, the public is going to want to access that because with all the water, there used to be a very large stream that actually used to pool and get pretty deep, because I used to swim there when I was a kid. And I'm anticipating that once other people find that out, that it will happen again. It hasn't been nearly as filled because of some things that neighbors have done, filled with water, I should say. But, once all these homes get in there and the water starts getting displaced, I can see it filling up again, or in, you know, lots of rain, like we've experienced in the past few years. So, I just, I can see people parking either on the street, which would be fine because it wouldn't impact me, but when they park on West Hampton Road or they park on Glendale Road, it's going to impact people that don't live on that subdivision. Thanks.
Anybody else? So, we also have, Carolyn handed this out at the beginning of the meeting. Do I have to read all twenty-two questions?
No, because a lot of these are issues that you have to, that need to, because we have to continue anyway, some of them can go away. I mean, there were some questions that I noted that I don't think have been clarified. So, I can go through those. One is, which actually relates to the trails on one of the original plans, there showed a path network by Lot twenty-four and Lot one, and I don't know if that's still planned or if that's generally just going to be left open.
Will it be there?
Yeah, through there. So, essentially, you could do a loop through the open space. If you lived in that neighborhood, you could...
The problem is the wetlands. You'd be crossing wetlands, this is all wetland here.
Yeah.
So, no, that's just going to remain open space, green space.
And then the easement area, I know there had been a question early on about whether that would meet the standard for multi-use sort of off-road trail of not exceeding eight point one percent. And so, I don't know if you did the calculations.
Oh, on the trail down here?
Yeah.
Yes, we can meander a trail up there that will...
Within that thirty-foot wide path that you're showing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have they seen the rest of these?
Uh, no, I didn't send them out.
All right, so, to the board, just so that the applicant has all information from us that they need, because we're going to continue this, are there any other issues that we have you'd like to raise now for the applicant? I think we've heard, I'm not sure how, how much of this goes on the plans, these, these agreement, these side agreements they have with the voters, do those have to go on the plans, or do they have to show those to us?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, there's two ways that you could analyze that or review it. If, you know, there's a special permit to consider, which is, has different criteria from subdivision. So, the special permit for the cluster has to address impacts to the invited properties and property owners. So, I think the only way that these side agreements can be enforced is if they become conditioned. So, if, if that is important to the approval for this cluster, then I would say you would want to see the specific language so that then they can be conditioned. And, you know, you could, the applicant could draft those and present them, and then just have them incorporated as conditions. I think that's the cleanest way.
Okay. The other issues that have come up, I think we, you're all going to resolve, the issue about the curving, the humanus versus granite. What other issues have come up that we want to raise? Do they, anybody else have anything else you want to bring up?
I was going to mention signage for the access to open space. Would there require some, I mean...
Typically, that standard that, you know, particularly between the lots.
I just don't want them to be surprised by that.
Right. That's pretty standard.
You don't want who to be surprised by that? Who, no?
The lot owners as well.
Yeah, no, lot owners.
Right. So, seventeen and eighteen, and four and five.
Well, four and five, there's not going to be a path.
But it's open space, so it would be available for, I mean, even if there's not a path for, you know, a path could potentially...
Yeah, it'd be similar, similar cardinal way.
Right.
Cardinal has that...
Has signage on all, six of the seven places.
Yep.
Standard for all the cluster open space.
Okay. Lighting, the no streetlights along the street, I think?
The best for a waiver.
Right, so there's, the waivers because they don't want...
Correct.
Right. The other thing...
Just at the entrance.
Right, I mean, where the bus, yeah, right there. Not on West Hampton Road though, just by the bus shelter, not on West Hampton Road.
Correct.
So, Steve?
Yep.
Certainly, a good point was made about visibility when you're coming out of the, on the road, onto Glendale Road for a fence, then the privacy stuff should not extend up to the road.
Right.
Be plenty of room for...
You have to need certain sightseeing trials.
Yeah, I just wanted to be reassured.
Right, I'm sure, I think the voter, I'm not sure if she's still here, but the fence that they're putting in next to there, it's not going to go right up to the street. So, if you're coming out the driveway, the fences can't go right up to a street. So, there will be a sightline, I think.
In other words, it won't be likely access to the landfill, which is...
Right, where the fence goes right, so it goes right up the street.
Was, was anything, uh, snow, was there anything, or did that all sound like that was planned?
Well, the snow is, it's illegal, they can't push the snow onto Glendale Road or onto West Hampton Road. That's, that's just, that would be, no matter who went through the road, that would be...
Nothing you do about the wildlife, really.
I don't know, I've lived on Palmero Terrace before, those bears found me on Palmero Terrace.
Yeah, nobody mentioned bears, you know?
Oh, they're there.
It's a bear trail. Okay, so, because we're going to have to continue this, any other things we want to ask?
I don't know if we had, I forget where we left off on, we usually, we traditionally put bollards or something up to indicate where the person's property ends in the open space, the, you know, the...
Right, thank you.
Have we ever come up with standards?
I mean, I don't know, like that's, like the bollard might end up being some, like right behind somebody's back door.
Right, we talked about this in the past, where, in fact, what was the last, I can't remember the last, we had all these land, all these...
High School Hill.
High School Hill, all these lots border up against conservation land. What happens over time is people will say, oh, it's going to go five feet forward, five feet forward, five feet forward.
I mean, I'm particularly worried about one and two. I don't know how steep the berm is.
They might store their tools, they'll write codes.
Right.
It would have to be split for people to be deterred, I think.
Right, so I think, I think what we've done in the past is we've either, we've used concrete markers, we've used boulders, we've used split rail fences, but some way to delineate that you are at the end of your lot, you cannot mow, put up your swing set.
We're going to have a two to three foot high berm there, an earth berm, that will delineate where the conservation area is, and, and we could also add signage there.
Well, let's allow one and two, but we're talking also 17 through 24. Five through five, you have every one of those lots, the back where the bus up into the conservation area.
I actually think that is some way of trying to control the wildlife issue a little bit because it's just keeping that open space actually open.
Right, right, and the idea of the worry is that, over time, people creep into those areas. They mow farther, they start fertilizing it, they want to do something. So, in the past, we've had various ways, we don't have a standard. It's not split rail fences, it's not bollards, it's not concrete pillars. We've allowed the developers to decide how they want to delineate so that the homeowners aren't going to be approaching the lot. So, I think there's something...
I think the issue is really more significant where there's a wetland buffer, as opposed to just the open space areas. I mean, yes, there'd be approach and it ultimately, you know, they have a property pinned in delineation, and so there, there's some self-enforcement there. I think the bigger issue is really along, I would say, is along the wetlands. So I might just throw that out there.
Well, if Randy Mark, I think the problem is just to screen out the open space. You have to keep people from approaching in the open space, whether it's a wetland or not. I think it's a pretty important issue.
I thought relatively recently, with some flag lots off of 66, I forget which project it was, but it was just an open space issue in their backyard and we made them. I think they had granite markers. Not uncertainty, but granite markers because we were concerned. It wasn't a wetland or issue, but it's just open space, we're just worried about a creep.
Yeah, I think the important ones are lots one and two, where we have to detect the wetland. A simple delineation than the other ones, granite markers would be, you know, just setting in some old granite curb perfectly or something would be fantastic. My experience is in general, people actually mow and cut down trees less than they particularly need to rather than like clearing off into the hinterland, clearing ass spaces.
Well, so I think, well, I mean, lots one and two are going to have a berm. I'm not sure how high the berm is, but I think the berm is, lots one and two are the ones I'm worried about the least because you're going to have to go up and over a berm in order to get to that. It's, it's the rest of them where I worry about the creep. So, you know, I would like to see something, some indication. It could be a marker, it could be, some indication that says you're, reach the end of what's yours, by the same.
Why don't we scratch our heads and come up with, with an option or two on next meeting?
That's, that's perfect, that's fine. Anybody, Mark?
Just the last question. I know that DPW didn't have issues with waiver on the lighting, but my only thought was, if this was a public road, we're talking about the, maybe we'd have granite curves instead of tuminus. But if this was a public road, we'd have light as well.
Well, the request, you've granted waivers for lighting on other occasions, particularly in this portion of the city where it's not such an urban context. So the idea is to keep it as dark as possible, and, but where the light might be just on the curve of the road or something. So I don't think that's as, I guess I wouldn't suggest that that's a tremendous waiver to consider, whether it's public or private. I think even on, you know, streets that, where the intention is to be public, that's the... The only issue relative to that is that a covenant might be put in place that says the homeowners can't at a future time request that street lights be put in because then it's a whole lot more expensive to put it in after the fact.
Like Ice Pond, is there other lakes on that road?
I can't remember.
I don't think so.
I'd have to look.
I have one quick question. I know we saw a cross section, but I can't remember. Are there sidewalks, or is it just?
Yes. Concrete sidewalk that runs the entire length.
Great, thanks, it's all I want.
So we have to pick a date to move to, go out to, so, do they need? Yeah, do you guys need two weeks, four weeks?
We're talking.
We're talking.
Sometime in April.
Yeah, April, I think, I don't think we have anything. First meeting would be the... 12? 12th, 26th?
26th will be great.
Alright, so we're leaving the public meeting open, which means there'll be public comment allowed at the next meeting as well. So we need a motion to continue this to 26th at 7:00 PM? Will we do the first one? Carol? First one? 7:00?
I'll move, please. Actually, I can't vote on this.
Randy, I think Randy made the motion, just give a second. Alright, so the motion is to move, to continue to 26th at 7:00 PM. All in favor? Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh yeah, and just so everybody is aware, you know, and because we're continuing this, members of the planning board can't discuss this outside of the room. So if you happen to see one of us on the street, you can't, you can't talk about it. And we all know we can't talk among ourselves outside of the room. Hand signals, nothing. Prowies, can't give us cookies.
So would you make a proposal? And answering those questions about the fence?
Alright, sorry if I'm getting to the right of the hearing. Alright, everybody, if I have to move on, if we have another hearing scheduled?
Alright, I'll stick to during the meeting.
It's really, really... We know that we can schedule it for nine, but we're not sure that it has a year.
Alright.
Yeah, right.
Carol, is there a USB on this computer?
There what?
Should I put a thumb drive in?
It's in the, it's in the keyboard, up top.
Oh, okay.
And it's faster if you drag it to the desktop and just...
Throw it on there?
And, yes.
There you go, have you seen it?
Thumb drive. It's a wonderful one.
Okay. Well, interesting. I may have to use my board to click that. Okay, we'll find out.
What's the problem that's not?
I don't know, just want to read it for some reason.
What, is there the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Why don't you go to, did you drag it to the, drag it to the desktop?
Yeah, um, I tried that. Yeah, it's right there.
Okay.
Oh, actually, no, 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 there you go. Actually, you're right, there's one.
Yeah, and that one more?
Well, it is.
No.
Why don't you go to the PowerPoint reader?
Is that it?
Down here?
Is that it?
Yeah, open that and see if you can open it that way. Is that what you were just trying to do?
No, it isn't. No, it doesn't like that file. Maybe I made a newer version or something? I have boards.
No, this is the, this is the newest version.
Seen this one? I don't know then.
You could try opening the PowerPoint, the whole application. Okay, you just did it. Can you...
Is it on the...
Did you send it, have you, did you send it to us beforehand?
Not the most, not the most recent one.
Can you, can you, can you right-click over that, just one more thing?
Yeah, well, the thing...
There's big modified January 10th.
That's what's concerning me now, because I've made one today. Would you all mind if we, if I brought up my boards that I brought as backup?
No.
Sure.
Okay. You guys have any issue with that?
No.
Sorry about that, I have an easel.
Let me officially actually open the hearing and then, there are your boards out. So, I think open the hearing still at 7:30 PM. At continuation of Ford Crossing with request by the applicant, that the board continue, oh, sorry, read the minutes. Continuation of a hearing on definitive subdivision for Ford Crossing off Village Hill Road as advertised with February 9th and February 16th, 2012. So, well, I'm not sure, I think the last meeting, you guys just opened this and immediately continued it, so no discussion. So all of us were present at the last discussion, the one that was up in Wayne's office. Is everybody here for this one, for that one? So we're all on the roll. And then I think Carolyn handed out, beginning of the meeting, these are the DPW, there's 37.
No, that's, those are proposed additions. I also sent you the DPW comments, which have been, right, which have been incorporated. Their comments have been incorporated as proposed additions into that, plus standard and the planning board condition.
Okay, has the applicant seen them?
Yes, because they were sent out a month ago, a half year ago.
Apparently similar.
Right, with some deletions and then one.
Okay, right, there's 22 and 21.
If I may, we have a draft for 22.
Oh, okay.
Mike Schneider represent the applicant, may I? Is he exact? The city solicitor. Seen these, as well as planning department, the North Lawn, Ira Grant. Trying to say it once, defend it.
See that from a president?
These are the most recent plans.
So we should throw off what we have?
No.
No, it's probably the same, actually.
As per discussion. Oh, these plans?
The plan. It may be the same. We made some revisions to our discussion with DPW, from their last memo.
The set we have is dated 1/25, these are dated too late, so we should toss it.
Yeah, there were a few comments, same. There were a few comments from the DPW's memo, they issued on, it was the ninth.
If we can introduce ourselves, my name's Alan Delaney, I'm the Director of Engineering. I was here on January 9th, along with John Perry from Gale Associates, and Beth Murphy is the Project Manager for Mass Development, who most of you know from past sessions. And Michael Schneider is our attorney that's representing us. We met on January 9th, and as a result of January 9th, Mr. Gilson, you had suggested that we make some changes relative to how notes and, and how the paths were designated and the plans those have been made. John Perry from Gale Associates and myself have been in conversation with DPW on numerous occasions since January 9th for their comments and how they should be resolved. We've made changes on these plans. We believe that almost all of the DPW comments are made, other than I have two comments I'll make later. But all of the specific labeling, notation issues have been addressed and are on the set of plans that you should be reviewing right now.
The main, the main concern that you guys had last time, and probably that you care most about is that we labeled the proposed future trail network in the vicinity of the development, as well as the Beach Street Park that protected open space, showing that approximate lot location as well. So those are, those have been addressed.
Which page are you looking at?
That's on C6. There's a handful of notes and it's a heavy dash line showing the approximate trail location that will be built in the future. What's, do you have, do you want us to go through it, then we'll have questions? Sure, I mean, it's, it's very much the same that we showed you last time. I think.
Refreshing memory.
Refreshing memory, so, let me just start from the beginning, give everyone a brief overview, we're all on the same page here. I'm sure everyone's aware of the Village Hill project, looking up Prince Street. It's, the old state hospital, it's been developed for the last 10 years or so. Multiple roadways are already existing, as shown on our existing conditions, what's the graphic photo? The area that we plan to develop is an extension of Ford Crossing, north of the existing coach house that we show on the aerial photo. It's essentially already, you see this dirt roadway going through there, it's almost following that footprint. So it's, it's, it's open space, it's growled right now, and it's vegetated whatsoever. We're not within 100 feet of any environmental features, wetlands or otherwise. The proposed development is intended to facilitate the build-out of residential houses and lots of townhouses in the north campus, as roughly shown in the approved master plan. Look at that picture. Master plan. Yeah, the current master plan, is that in here? What you just, no, what you just handed us? No, it's not part of the subdivision plans. Right. That's a bit again in the rocks. I think, what I'm curious about is always, the current master plan never quite matches up to what you... Um, yeah, it's a bit again in the rocks, I think, what I'm most curious about is always, the current master plan never quite matches up to what is on here. So, I'm not sure, are you guys planning to go to the CAC?
We've already been to the CAC, and in fact, um, I'd be happy to come back and update you, um, at the next meeting on the master plan.
Who, who's, who's lead, are, are we in front of the CAC, do they, you know, is this, is the master plan that the last CAC has la, most recently approved? The one that you're showing us, or are we seeing something that's different from what they planned?
When we submitted this plan, we had not done the, uh, presented the updates to the master plan to the CAC. So, on, uh, February 8th, we went and did that presentation. So, now this, the updated master plan is on the website.
Is that the P O W?
Yes, so I'll just hand that out.
And you, there's separate jurisdictions. CAC just generally says, okay, here are the number of units we're going to approve, and here's generally the layout. They don't look at the details, they don't permit anything, they don't have any evaluation whether the project meets special permits, like planner subdivision criteria. So, even if the CAC says, okay, we grant 350 units, that doesn't mean they're permitted. It doesn't mean they're permitted in any particular location or format, you know, townhouse versus single family. You all have jurisdiction to determine whether or not the planned village build-out meets the zoning criteria, meets, you know, the original special permit, and meets subdivision rules. So, CAC hasn't really, hasn't voted yet on this master plan, but that's immaterial as it relates to whether or not the master plan is meeting any special permit or subdivision rules. It's really more, particularly for them, it's more conceptual, oh, here's a general layout and we know it's going to change because it has to meet the standards in the zoning.
Oh, it's definitely conceptual, I mean, they, they choose to put in the houses up here, they could have just said, we're going to put a whole bunch of houses up here. You know, they're not going to, this is not something we're going to hold them to necessarily.
So, when the C, when you guys, at the CAC are voting on this, you're not expecting this is what you're going to see up there five years?
I'm not. No, I mean, it all depends on whether they can sell it or not, what they can sell.
Right, but that's the understanding that the, what you guys aren't voting on is what you want to see up there, but your, it's a conceptual density, number of units, basic overall, concept.
I think that master plan is, like you said, to show, you know, that they intend to build residential units in, in approximate density, and this subdivision application before you is, uh, to build the roadways that will facilitate...
Right.
Some build-out, uh, in accordance with that conceptual, uh, master plan.
Right, and I think one of the things for us to discuss tonight as well is, uh, subdivision is a road, but we're, we always look at the park, the trail, the monuments.
Yeah, that's on there, yeah.
Right, it's on, uh, it's, it's on the plans, but there's a difference, there's a site plan, and then there's a subdivision plan, subdivision plan is where the road, so, does that make sense?
Right.
We have, you have both essentially, in the, in the packet.
All right, so, I can go.
Uh, just give you a little rough idea of what the existing, um, where we're tying in, we're going to, uh, extend Village Hill Road, which is the Hammerhead portion of, uh, the site now, just in front of the coach house. We're going to extend the roadway at the corner of Ford Crossing and New Southie, and we're going to extend Old Land Drive, all of which are existing roadways, uh, shown in pictures here, which I feel are for you to see, but they're all, um, the tuminous, uh, concrete that we're tying into. We're going to extend the sidewalks and, uh, provide sidewalks per regulation.
I lost some of your standing.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, New Southie is here.
Oh, there, okay, that's one of those after.
Yeah, exactly, for the existing Ford Crossing is where that corner meets there, Old Lander's way to the, uh, east. So, essentially those roadways are being extended, Ford Crossing's coming over to tie in. Uh, we're providing sidewalks on both sides of the road, uh, we had a discussion last time as to where that sidewalk wants to be within the right-of-way, and we argued that we wanted it, uh, up against the curb in the parking area. DPW actually wants it at the back of the right-of-way, uh, we've actually conceded to the DPW's wishes to put it at the back of the right-of-way.
That's what we wanted.
Except, uh, we're going to keep it one foot off of the right-of-way to have a construction tolerance, because in the past, there have been some issues with putting it right on the right-of-way, going on the curb, you can't build it exactly, you're over by an inch, and now you need an easement, so...
Well, I'll tell you, I was up there driving around today, and every sidewalk up there is at the back of the right-of-way, there's a tree built. You know, I know we talked about this a lot at the last meeting where, you know, you guys, particularly, we're talking about putting the sidewalk up the curb, I remember this conversation.
Right, there's parking.
There's parking, and do I step out on the grass when I get in my car, or do I step on the sidewalk? Every sidewalk up there is on the other side, is on the far side of the tree built, so...
The only one that isn't is on Village Hill Road itself.
Uh, no, that's not true, I drove down Village Hill Road today.
Village Hill Road is right up against the, um, the park, the on-street parking.
Where, yeah, where...
Because there's actually about...
Only for the cutouts, only at the cutout.
There's about six or seven feet of right-of-way behind the sidewalk.
Just because it's been done wrong before, doesn't mean...
Well, no, I, I think what we have here is what I wanted, this is exactly, because the only place it was up on the curb is where there's those cutout.
Yeah, exactly, we, we don't have parking, it's, you have the tree built and then the, the parking cutout. We're cautious on that, but we're, we're doing it the way, the right-hand way DPW wants it, and so, perfectly, we're tapping now. We're providing adequate street trees, uh, street lighting, um, tangents, radiuses, there's a few, uh, waivers that we've been over before, and I think there's been no approving most of those waivers. All having to do with, uh, slight variations in geometry. Uh, all of the roadways are fairly gently graded, there haven't been very many comments or discussions regarding the grading or site drainage, it's, uh, pretty straightforward. The only portion that's over, I think, 2% slope is where we're tying in from, um, the intersection now with Village Hill and Ford Crossing with, uh, New Southie and Ford Crossing, and that's, I think, uh, 6%, which is still below the maximum that is allowed.
Sorry, uh, just, are you building the driveway in the upper right corner, or is the, the, the potential developer for that corner building that driveway?
Uh, which one are you talking about, here?
Uh, no, down, no, no, the driveway, the shared driveway, are you guys building that?
Uh, yes, we're going to build it to binder grade.
Okay, so you are building that.
The common driveway.
Common driveway.
Common driveway.
That would be part of this topic.
Should be a hammerhead at the end of it.
Uh, no, just there. And there's going to be, um, driveways off of that into, uh, garages.
Right, oh, I thought, I thought in the last clip there's a hammerhead, so you can turn around.
No, there wasn't.
Yeah, no, essentially you can...
We discussed the fire truck, you can back out.
Oh, so it was, okay, we had the discussion.
And cars can essentially turn into the driveway, or they'd be backing out of their garages, and there's going to be a, a small portion at the end of that where you can use to make that maneuver.
Good. Was it, oh, sorry.
Have a, actually, a quick question about that, just looking at the conceptual plan, um, Beach Tree Park and Memorial Park are somewhat divorced. Is there any way that you've thought of, of actually, uh, getting them so that they're just literally across the road, it would be nice to have a continuation.
Well, there's already, uh, there's already houses built.
These are already...
Yeah, up to that, up to that point.
They can live that long.
That's not something I call... John, you want to move your head?
John, just let, let that talk about itself.
Beth, you want to...
Yeah, um, this memorial park idea has just been presented to the CAC February 8th, and, um, formerly, in the former master plan, Memorial Park had been voted up here, and the Memorial Committee of the CAC Subcommittee is the one who is really, uh, taking the lead on where that park goes. Um, we think this new location is a much better location, it's actually where the fountain, that was in front of Old Main, that's its original location. Um, plus, it's right in the center of the development, um, and it's got, addresses the street straight on. We think that the kind of park that they're looking for, which is kind of contemplative, uh, park that, uh, brings you back to the original purpose of, of the state hospital, um, is really well-served by this. And then, we will work with them to actually design it, work with the CAC. One other thing you should know about that is that the city intends that this should be a public park, um, and so this park will, uh, come back to you for review.
I don't know if you guys care too much about the utilities, but we've worked with DPW over the last, uh, many months, and we've all of the, uh, issues that they had with any of our utilities resolved to date now.
Yeah, you guys care about it since you have to...
Well, the, um, the only thing I would say is, so you poured this, and I didn't have to talk to you, I think it was 10 pages long, the, the PDF from the DPW today. Not admitting that I did not read it, um, have they signed off on...
Yeah, a lot of their comments were, so it was sort of a stream of comments from the original, um, review, and then how it had been addressed or not addressed, and then how it had been subsequently addressed or not addressed, and then final proposed condition. So, what, um, so the DPW signed off on it was really just sort of the trail of thought for, um, all those initial comments. So, I have taken the ones that were, they requested conditions and plugged them into that draft set of conditions that would, um, address their final, you know, comments.
So, we're going to have to go through...
So, the other thing I want to point out too, in regards to DPW comments, is that we do have a stormwater permit.
Right, yep, I hear that, yep.
This slide shows, uh, profiles, and again, it really just shows the grading that I talked about before, everything's fairly gently graded and it meets all of the subdivision requirements. Um, and then this is our watershed plan, showing that we're maintaining all the watersheds that were permitted in 2003, and then again in 2007, and now it's been updated. Um, a couple of these areas shifted with, with the actual location of where Ford Crossing ended up, and actual impervious, impervious areas, so everything jives with these plans now, and that's what our stormwater permit has been based off of, so, everything's up to date. Do you guys have any design questions before I think, um, Alan and Beth maybe have a few other things to address?
Anybody have any questions over, so far? Great, thank you.
I, I don't know if you already intend, uh, Mr. Gilson was to go through each co, each, each of the 36 comments, but I just had a couple of comments on a couple of them.
Yeah, I think we're probably going to, I think we're going to have to go through them.
Okay, then I'll wait for you to get to the points then.
Does anybody have any other, another part of the presentation?
Uh, I want to, what's the exact scope of what we are approving today?
So, what we're approving today, and this is where it's, I think there's, we'll probably have a little discussion, but what we're approving today is the road.
Okay, it has nothing to do with Memorial Park or Beach Park directly?
Um, because under subdivision, um, under subdivision rules, you need to know what the uses are, proposed uses, um, abutting the streets. You have a vague idea, um, of what the uses are, except for, I mean, there's one block that seems to be pretty firm, because there's an application that's going to come before you in a couple of weeks on that. But, um, um, they're going to have to come back for site plan approval for any use that hasn't been previously approved. So, any, um, the parks that they're showing there, the memorial park will have to come through site plan approval. So, what you're, um, what's before you now are street, are the streets, so the extension of Ford Village, Hill, and Old Lander, and the infrastructure that goes along with it. There are, which we'll get into as we go through this, there are, is still the outstanding issue of how the linkages of the trails cross the streets that they're constructing. So, I think it's valid for there to be at least one condition that we'll go through, um, related to that, because since they haven't fully designed the path, that it is likely they'll have to come back and re, um, configure some of the streets that they may build, if they go ahead and build without fully designing. So, that's where there's some issue of, uh, potential conflict between what you approve and things that they haven't quite figured out what to do.
Yep. Sorry, do you have...
Oh, no, that, I, I think that's an accurate description, and, and our draft comment 22 is meant to address some, some of her concerns. About the pathway, thank you.
Is there anything else formally you guys want to talk about before we have questions and start going through the conditions? There were...
Do you think it makes sense for me to put this up on the screen, so as we go through it, if there are any, I, if there are any things... Yeah, I have the cable, I just need to run it over to that side.
Um, and we can talk for a second, because I think, uh, Carolyn, and, well, at the last meeting, we talked a bit about, um, how to definitively define Beach Tree Park as being a park. That it was going to be somehow delineated on the plan as it was never going to be built on. And I think the other part, and Carolyn started talking about, was we, we spent a lot of time talking about the paths, we wanted to see the paths on the plan. And, uh, I think what we're going to be discussing in a minute is to, whether or not we can, as we define the subdivision, we can actually say, they just have to show us where the park, where the, where the path's going to be, so... Carolyn, do you want me to just go through the 30, start going through the 36?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Number one, prior to endorsement of the definitive plan, performance guarantee, the performance and organic subdivision, which is also a book posted, I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Final construction plans, which is to be submitted for review and approved by the DPW, um, again, pretty straightforward. The Owners Association shall be expanded if necessary to incorporate references to lots created in the subdivision prior to the first lot sale, as an assurance that the Owners Association will perform required capital improvements in the maintenance. Now, will these six lots, I think what we're talking about, will they be part of the Owners Association?
Yes, the Northland Owners Association.
And so, is every house, is every unit in the...
And the north campus is in the north.
That are all in the association?
I just had a quick question, I couldn't actually pass that one, because the, the bracket doesn't close. Where's the, where's the sub close?
Oh, at the end of three.
At the end, it goes all the way, okay.
Right, number four, prior to the construction of the road, the applicant must report all covenants, the covenants shall not require financial, shall not require financial payment from the owner of the open space areas. Good, very straightforward. All maintenance of the roadway, infrastructure, and sidewalks shall be, shall be responsible to the Owners Association until such time as the city accepts the streets. Snow removal on the sidewalks is the responsibility of the owner or Owners Association, and it shall not be part of the covenants. This includes the paved walkways bordering and within the open space. So, the question, I mean, point number five Carolyn has in the line, this includes the paved walkways bordering and within the open space. We're going to have this issue where we haven't defined the paved walkways in the open space, is that a problem? Sorry, you were typing.
Um, what, that's a right...
So, number five, the last sentence is number five. So, we're saying, you know, snow removal on sidewalks is the responsibility of the owner or Owners Association, this includes paved walkways bordering and within the open space. But we haven't, the plans we're going to get to in a second don't show where those paved paths through the open space are, so...
Just to say when constructed or something.
Is that, yeah, I'm not sure if that's going to be...
Yeah, I mean, there's, uh, I mean, it may not, it's, it certainly was applicable and, um, for, um, I mean, there, there are segments of sidewalk that go along this Beach Tree Park. So, you know, they're going to have to be responsible for that too, so that's...
So, the Owners Association's given responsibility of plowing and maintaining those walkways within the park, within that block?
Yeah.
Seems to me it's pretty comprehensive what it does.
We're, we're fine.
Present or future?
Well, no, it's just that we're saying for there, uh, the organization, uh, the Owners Association shall be responsible for all snow removal on the sidewalks that are 10 foot wide, and that those that barter open space regardless of ownership of these areas. Is the city taking any of the streets up there, or is the city planning?
Yeah, um, the, uh, Village Hill.
Yep.
Um, the portion of Old Lander and Mojer and New Southie were just taken like a month ago, did January.
Okay, so the city is already up there plowing?
Well, no.
We haven't had any stone yet.
I'm supposed to go skiing this weekend.
They're ready.
Prior to endorsement, the proposed future use lots, feature house lot label on the east side of Old Lander at the intersection of Ford Crossing shall be removed from all planned sheets.
It has. So, that, that could go away.
Um, the break, no curb cut is allowed... The break, no curb cuts allowed for the parcel on the east side of Olander at the intersection of Ford and Olander unless through other planning or approval compliance with a special permit can be made.
That's not where.
Excuse me, that's a different draft comment than we received.
Okay, this is what I got today.
Number eight.
Number eight?
No, so.
No, it's number eight.
No, that was actually in response to Craig's comment because it first said no curb cuts allowed on the parcel on the east side of Olander at the intersection of Ford, and Craig and Beth shot back that, no, they wanna say unless there's some approval from the planning board, so.
Yeah, that's, that's different, I won't just let.
Oh, your number seven is my number eight.
You took one out.
Because I just deleted the one that they said was not necessary.
But it renumbered everything up.
Oh, so it renumbered everything.
Should I not have deleted it? Oh, I do.
Okay.
How's that?
It was a lot of confusion there.
It's not that late.
At this rate though. Number, current number nine.
Number nine I have an issue with because we're still trying to address with city solicitor what the timing on this is. We can't hope that you wouldn't hold up the project for a governmental action to occur. When Village Hill Road was accepted, the ears of the Hammerhead were included because at the time we had not had plans and knew our schedule of how we were going to extend, when we were gonna extend Village Hill. So that Hammerhead actually provided the turnaround for emergency vehicles and DPW vehicles, but now we're extending Village Hill Road so that those ears of the Hammerhead want to get turned back from the city to us so that we can continue to develop. What DPW says in their comment is that it has to happen prior to construction, and we're certainly gonna do it, but unfortunately city solicitor was, came on new last Friday, and we haven't had the opportunity to discuss this with the new city solicitor. And the old city solicitor said wait for the new city solicitor to us a couple of weeks ago. So we intend to bring this, we don't know if it is going to require a city council vote or if there's some other administrative way that this could happen, but we're actively pursuing this.
So would we say, or unless otherwise arranged by agreement between the city and Mass Development? Carolyn, do you?
Yeah, I mean, we could, the city could also grant an easement until the transfer can happen, you know, construction easement or something, which might be faster, I don't know, but.
You might run into the same concerns if the city is conveying property interest on the timing through an easement.
Should be fairly routine.
What I'm saying, I mean, because we want to word it, so I said, unless some other arrangement can be worked out between the city and Mass Development. And if the lawyers, city solicitor and you guys work on an agreement, I think it's gonna be fine with us, whether or not it's fine with the city council, I can't speak to them.
And maybe a side letter or something that city solicitor and our council agrees upon.
Right, I'm happy with putting the language in so you guys can work it out.
Thank you.
Let me know when you're ready, Carolyn. All right, handicap ramps are required at all sidewalk corners.
John, is that settled? Is that it?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's, that's all done.
Eleven.
Don't worry, I learned my lesson.
Eleven, a warrant analysis is required to determine if there is a need for the proposed stop signs in Village Hill Road at Ford Crossing and on Ford Crossing and Olander Drive. If the warrants are met, the installation of stop signs must be approved by city council. Well, my guess is that's, that's the county board, like this is, city council, I think they gotta do stop signs, although it was the DPW could do it. We had looked into this and discussed it with DPW and it doesn't, it did not figure a warrant for stop signs, and they had some specific signage that they wanted us to put in instead of stop signs, and that's now in the plans, and it's all been addressed with DPW.
So the stop signs are out?
Correct. So what can you put into the stop sign? They wanted pedestrian crossing signs at all of the crosswalks and a few other warning signs that are traffic calming.
We're still including all the handicap ramps in the corners so that the pedestrian signs act kind of as a indication that there's a, there's an intersection there.
So number 12 can be deleted too?
You know, possibly, I could envision that if we went into the next phase and extended Olander further, maybe at that time, there may be a stop sign added. But for the time being, it's a dead end, I mean, you can't go any farther.
If that becomes a stop sign, why city council?
City council should approve stop signs, I mean, I know it's a far more difficult process than you would think, but doesn't the city council have to wait on the stop sign?
I got this language from DPW, they're my engineers.
Yeah.
So can 12, 13 and 14 be deleted too? Did you already take care of all those? Any new revised plans?
John, no, I can see that one. I think that the double sided pedestrian crossings, that's what they wanted instead of the stop signs.
Right, so you put that on the revised plans?
That's in the plan, yeah.
And then what about pedestrian crossings or fluorescent yellow or green?
That's in the plan as well.
Right, so we're not having 36 conditions.
Yeah, 15 to 102.
Why, Carolyn, I thought we standardized on certain color, I mean, is this gonna be a different color than every?
No, this is, that's the standard color.
That is the standard color.
It just wasn't shown in the detail.
Number 15, the white slope bar stripes shall be one foot wide, not two feet wide? That's been addressed. Because I'm not sure what "to feel" as an indicator would be.
It's JP.
Doesn't feel, two feet.
It's being deleted, that's not feeling.
Old number 16, the detailed call out for signage is 7-7B slash C15, not C17? That's been addressed as well. Carol, let me know if I'm getting ahead of you. Wheelchair ramp, type three is called out at the road A crossing, if the detail referred to is incorrect, then no type three detail is provided. That's been addressed as well. Good, we're halfway. Street signs in accordance with city standards shall be placed at intersections prior to the issuance of the first building permit?
It's a standard condition.
Number 19, sidewalks shall be continuous, should no breaks or curb cuts?
Again, standard condition.
Number 20, sidewalks shall be one foot from the edge of the property line as indicated?
That was a concession from DPW that we've met.
Okay, you met that one. 21, the cement concrete walk details shall indicate 8 inch of processed gravel, not 6 inches.
Done.
Let's skip 22 for right now. 23, this is a long one. This is, I think, about unholy.
That looks like our 22.
Right, 20, yeah, so let's go to the 24. Paths should be on the outside edge of the drip lines of the beach trees. That must be referring to the path through the, what's labeled Beach Tree Park.
Yeah, it's the east-west path, but if, I guess this is, this is a little bit difficult because we are addressing a path network through Beach Tree Park, and there's no way to stay outside of the drip line for the whole path network. So we understand the issues and we have a landscape architect with Fields and Thomas working on that design and are close to bringing that forth for planning staff to see, but it's kind of, it's not within the subdivision road that we're proposing, so I think it may be inappropriate to put this in the conditions.
They have to come back for site plan approval for that part in the layout, so.
Well, so let's do the Beach Tree Park because that's probably easier without getting into the paths right now. So at the last meeting we said we want to see a delineation that Beach Tree Park is a park.
Yeah, and on that lot sheet that John pointed out, where we showed the dark dotted lines, we've added, added the note, and you can see the dark dotted lines actually create what we are initially envisioning as that path network through Beach Tree Park.
Which plan, which sheet?
C6.
C6. So what it says on the plan is approximate location of Beach Tree Park, future protected open space, not residential lot. So I guess the question for me, and I'm not sure for everybody else, for somebody else, is that, is that a guarantee that that's a park, or is that a statement of intent that it might suddenly be a park, but we're not telling you it's a park right now?
What we can say, give you is as much comfort in us telling you it's gonna be a park. The one thing, the one thing we don't know is the western property line.
Yep.
The other three are pretty much set.
So when does it become a park?
Soon as that can determine that fourth line.
Yeah, well, so you're gonna come back with a site plan for the upper right corner, or I think Jonathan, I guess you're coming back with a site plan at Mass Development sometime in the next few months. That's gonna pretty much put the southern or the northern border of the park.
Yes.
The road has the east and the south.
Yes.
And the western border, when do we get that?
We have an RFI out on the street of Beth those for a developer, and I think it's what, next week or the end of this week is the response?
Tomorrow, responses are due, and so our hope is to, in that area to the west where they're showing townhomes, that we'll get a proposal, be able to negotiate with a developer to develop that area, and then that western boundary will be set. But we will be able to show you pathways more specifically in Beach Tree Park when right builders comes back in.
Well, I guess there's, so the two parts are, the paths are one issue and the park itself, or, to me, they're two different issues. One is designating that area as a park.
And it is, it will be designated in the covenants and declarations of the Landowners Association.
I mean, I think you can find some level of comfort, they really can't put any use to any parcel of land up here until they get site plan approval. So they couldn't put a house there until they get site plan approval, they can't put a park there until they get site plan approval. So essentially, it's blank now. So you would have to approve, you would have to make a determination whether whatever use, if they come in for 10 units there, you'd have to make the determination that that's consistent with a special permit approved.
Well, I guess the reason I struggle with this because I know when Jonathan Wright comes in a few months, whenever he comes in, part of his plan is based on the fact that those houses abut a park. And so if he comes in with a site plan and says, I'm gonna build these houses, hey, now there's gonna be a park here, but somebody else comes in six months from now and says, hey, I don't want the park, I wanna put a couple houses there, what's, you know, what guarantee do the people who buy those houses have that that's a park?
Well, that's not your problem though. Your problem is making sure that it complies with the special permit criteria for planned village and their, and site plan approval. So, you know, originally, there wasn't a park proposed here and, but there was, you know, different mechanisms were identified to protect the signature trees that were on site, and this happens to be one of those mechanisms to do that. But so I don't think, I mean, and because of the piecemeal nature of this, I would, I would say try to look at it as the, you know, the single family, the bungalow lots out on the western portion of the project, you were told are gonna be bungalow lots, you saw the lots delineated actually in the subdivision, but you don't know what's gonna happen north of that, and that's sort of a change in, you know, landscape in terms of what can be marketed and that kind of thing. So someone buys a house on that bungalow lot section of the project, they don't know what's gonna happen north of them at this point. It's a similar, I would say it's a similar situation, whether it's a park or, you know, another house lot that comes behind those houses. And either way, it needs approval from you guys to ensure that it meets the criteria that you already approved in special permit.
Well, but there's a difference between, you know, delineating something is either conservation land or protected or that's permanent versus just nobody having a plan to put anything on it right now. And one's permanent and one's just like, well, you know, we might get one someday, so.
And just to address that, in the declaration of covenants and restrictions for the North Landowners Association, this is going to be shown as park.
Is going to be shown as park. When, when will that happen?
That will be recorded. We have to update the recording every time we add more lots to this, to the association, and so that will be part of that recording of that law.
So when does that happen?
That will happen after the, as it says in here, after the right builders lots are coming on, we can't sell those lots until we update the recording of the landowner's covenant and restrictions, and it will be in that updated recording.
As soon as we generate the westernmost boundary.
Right, and so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jonathan Wright, right holders. Maybe it's anecdotal, but the discussion of this path and the park has been going on for some, some time, and our contract with Mass Development, our lens disposition agreement requires them to design permit and build that park by September of 2012. Now, that's not your action, but it is a contractual obligation that they've entered into.
Right, and that's.
And I want just so that you knew that, it's not the same as your authority, but it has some standing.
Right, I guess for me, it's just I wanna make sure it stays a park forever, for as long as ever can be, and the contract between you and Mass Development doesn't give me as much reassurance as.
Tony, I understand. I think it's very important that that recording happened at the time that we begin to acquire these lots not relevant to the future lot line on the west, should that be further delayed some months or years because our buyers are gonna require that that be permanent.
Right, I think.
So we'll have to work out the timing of that.
Right. I'm sorry, Mark?
Thank you. Can we just say for the development of those six lots, the covenant will be recorded, or make it a covenant that it will be recorded in the owners' association that that park?
Before construction of the?
Or before final acceptance or before, just, just to lock it in so that with the development comes the declaration of that.
I don't understand why the west border is sort of fluid. It's shown on the plan as coming straight down and being collinear with the line at the west.
Which is where we would hope it would be, but we wanna leave the flexibility of moving at five or 10 feet this way or that way to the developer who actually puts the proposal together to fill in that lot.
The first I heard is a five feet or 10 feet, what if it's 20 feet?
I, I think we need, as, as the owner of the property, to negotiate with a prospective developer to develop the lot and not shoehorn them, and 10 or 15 feet would kill their proposal.
Yeah, I actually think that the relative focus here is that we're gonna design and build this park by September of 2012, and therefore we'll know the western boundary at that time.
So you got to, before you even build it, you got to come to us with a site plan for that park?
We're close.
But when you come to us with a site plan for that park, you're gonna have a boundary on it, and we're gonna say that's the boundary, you want, that's the park.
And the reason we haven't come to you is we got our RFI proposals due tomorrow, so we're close.
I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna move ahead on this, then, you know, I mean, we could say today, before, you know, you have one applicant who's gonna be coming in in probably a month or two with his plan, you have another possible park being built maybe by September of 2012, you're saying you're contractually obligated to build this park, but you guys can't even define the boundaries of the park?
No, we can define the boundaries of the park, and I also, it's important for you to understand that it's, the landowners' association is responsible for the maintenance of this park, and we're having in their covenants the restriction that this will always be a park. So that's the mechanism that tells you this is a park, that's.
But it sounds like you guys can change the boundaries of that park anytime you want.
But I think the issue is, is not.
Once it's recorded, we can, in the covenants, we can.
I think the issue is what the permit in front of you is for the creation of a street and not necessarily the creation, and not the creation of these six single family house lots and not the creation of the park and not creation of townhouse structures. So if you sort of take that and focus on what's in front of you, then the park boundary really sort of falls away from that because it's not part of this permit application and permit request. It would be, when they come in for a permit for site plan, you couldn't approve a site plan without a hard and fast boundary and without a condition about when it's recorded, how it's recorded, whether it's in perpetuity or not.
Right, okay, well hypothetically, if they came in with the, with the western border being 20 feet east of where it fell now, could we vote it down, or is this a?
No, because this is not, you're, they're not asking for approval of a park.
No, I mean, when, when the park approval comes in, or whatever, in the future.
Okay, when the site plan comes in.
Only, only to the extent that you feel like it's not consistent with a special permit for Village, for the Village Hill.
So I'm just worried we're gonna back ourselves into a corner that everybody's saying, yes, there's gonna be a park there, but you can't tell what it's gonna look like.
But you have to. But you have to, but, but you have to determine, make the determination at the time it comes to you, what the purpose of the park is. Is it fulfilling that purpose? And, I mean, you also have to remember that the original, I, I mean, there are a lot of little parks within the village and there's also a ton of open space outside. And so I, I wouldn't argue from an urban development perspective that you need all those parks. And so you would have to decide at that time whether a smaller park is not meeting the principles of Village Hill versus a larger park and make that determination. But I don't think that's part of the subdivision approval now. It'll be part of your site plan to make a determination whether it's consistent with the original special permit.
How is this, this reflected?
I was actually just trying to say what Carolyn was saying, that, um, I don't think that's really what's in front of us right now. And I'm quite happy to move on and deal with this when we come to a site plan.
24, we already talked about the leaning.
Yeah, let's just go ahead with our conditions here. Because this isn't really, you know, 25 have to do with the park?
No, the light, 25 is about the lighting of the street.
Yeah, so why are we hung up here?
Cause the 24, one of the ones, whatever the one we've just gone.
It was about the path.
Right, and we can't.
The path, the park. I mean, we can't, if we can't find the park, we can't find the path.
You might say they're being a little facetious about it.
Well, I guess to me, I mean, my concern is.
24 is, 1 is deleted.
Oh, right, but however we got here, this was an issue from the last meeting was we wanted to delineate that this is a park. And the other thing we talked about the last meeting was we wanted to see some kind of design or idea where these paths are gonna go through this park. And I think what they're saying is they can't tell us, they can't guarantee or give us a guarantee really it's gonna be a park. They could say, in the future, we could probably guarantee that it's gonna be a park, we can't do it now. And that, I think what we're gonna hear next is that they can't tell us where the paths are gonna go. But what, what's gonna happen is when those paths go in, they may have to rip up part of the roads. And we're gonna say, well, that's your nickel. You gotta rip up a road to put in a park or to put in the paths, then you're gonna have to do that. So, does that, I know you're standing, you probably wanna weigh in on this, so go ahead.
I, I think Carolyn's, or been, her description of, of what's before you tonight is, is pretty apt. When it comes to open space and the pathways that we'll, we'll get to that aren't part of this subdivision approval, the ultimate, your ultimate remedy is the 2002 special permit, which was a, uh, from the, from the get-go, it's been a conceptual idea of where these parks and paths would be. But I, it's not appropriate on, on the approval of this street to, to condition that other property here.
But we're gonna have a social, a site plan in front of us in a month or two. And Jonathan Wright just said he has a contractual agreement with Mass Development that that is gonna be a park. So when you guys come to us for a site plan that says you two have an agreement that that's a park, I would be very strongly in favor of seeing it somewhere recorded that that's a park.
And that's what I keep referring to in the declaration of covenants and restrictions of the North Owners Association is going to recognize this as a park. And that declaration gets recorded and it is intended to be a park in perpetuity.
In perpetuity, is there? So what you're saying, it could never not be a park?
It could never not be a park unless I suppose in, uh, I think.
Well, unless somebody else changed it.
No, no.
Can we make, I don't, can we make another condition? Not now, cause I don't think it's relevant now. But in the month, whatever, when those six lots come, that that's.
Okay, so I guess.
When it's recorded.
All right, so we can move on, just so you guys have heard us, or you've heard me, I guess, it's really, I couldn't care about.
I'm with you.
And Franny, okay, good, Franny's with you there. We, but this, you might be saying that this is not apropos to the subdivision, and I could probably agree with that. But when we come into a site plan for this parcel, it's gonna be very apropos to that discussion.
Yes, but there's a legal nuance here that's important to make, which is the planning, uh, board cannot designate park area in its plans without it being considered a taking and then just compensation being paid to the owner.
But you've already made an agreement with the builder that it is gonna be a park.
Yeah, exactly, but I'm talking about the legal mechanisms here. And so that's why this is being done through the declarations and covenants. That's the legal mechanism, uh, that's appropriate to, uh, having this be a park in perpetuity. The planning board cannot just say, we wanna park here in perpetuity, that's not allowed under your regulation.
And it's not allowed on the, on the face of the statute.
Yeah, you guys have never done that when they've shown the park, like the open space along the land or said, this is gonna be our open space. So the condition is, as the applicant offered, this open space has to be permanently restricted as open space because you guys said it was gonna be open space. So we're gonna take you at face value, show us that you're.
Yeah, but you, yeah, usually we get people to put that, you know, with a cluster.
Oh, they have to, yeah. It's not that you're taking the land, it's they're offering it, this is how they're gonna meet a special permit criteria. They're offering the open space, okay, you're offering it, offer it all the way to the bank.
Yeah, that's, I guess what I meant, offer it all the way to the bank.
And, and again, I want to point out that the, what governs clusters is different than what governs planned village. So in the cluster, you specifically say you wanna put it in a certain kind of conservation restriction. And that's appropriate to the cluster. Here, it's appropriate to put that restriction in the, in the covenants and restrictions. And, and we can show you, you know, we can give you the form of that at the next, uh, site plan.
Like I said, it's, so we're all, we're gonna have this conversation again in a few months. And, and, yeah, so, okay, I'll let it go for now. Um, so are we done with paths then? We can't talk about the paths?
No, we're gonna talk about the paths.
All right, let's talk about the paths. So as long as we're doing this, let's talk about the paths, is that number 22 that?
Yeah.
That we have here? So what we talked about last time was we wanted to see the paths.
So I just wanted, the thing that was handed out tonight is a modification of what, um, was discussed. So let me give you some background information. The, um, there were a bunch of conditions, draft conditions that were sent out for, ahead of the last hearing that related to, you know, making sure that this, wherever the bike path was connected to the sidewalks, it was 10 feet wide. There were four or five conditions that were, um, objectionable to the applicant because of the claim that it was outside the purview of subdivision approval. So, um, I drafted some language and had the city solicitor look at it for an alternative to essentially put the applicant on notice that, um, you know, there are, in order to meet the special permit criteria that was approved for creating a network of linked paths, east-west and north-south throughout the campus, that you have to accommodate those when you're crossing streets. And if there's ever a merger of paths with sidewalks, they have to be 10 feet. So here, they're clearly creating streets where there might be, uh, a, a need to run the path along the sidewalk in order to address topo and crossings and things like that. They're not willing to design it at this point. So the condition that, um, was drafted was one to say that, you know, this, nothing in the approval is waiving the requirement of creating that interconnected linkage of, of paths. And then if there's construction that happens on the roadways, that, um, then has to be ripped up to comply with the standards of creating this path networks, then it's the applicant's risk that they take. What you have, what was handed out in paper copy form was additional language that was added. And I've got this, um, additional underlined up there, which is the difference. So there's a lot of merging of CAC language and, um, and with the planning board language. And I think the middle paragraph that's underlined up there should not be included because it, the CAC has no jurisdiction whatsoever to review permitting and compliance with a special permit site plan. So, um, the original rendition that's printed out for you, um, tonight doesn't have this underscored language in it. So that's the difference.
That's what the approval of the citizens did.
Right, well, the original, but there was, they fixed the typo, this is my, oh, oh.
Oh, I, I believe what I, I handed out tonight does include the unders, the first set of underscored language. The master plan has been modified.
It does, but I'm suggesting that that's not appropriate for a condition that the planning board incorporates because the CAC has nothing to do with, um, any kind of, has no jurisdiction over reviewing permits. So it doesn't make sense to include them in.
But the, the important point that I think needs to be understood in this condition is that it's a concept master plan. It is evolving over time, it has evolved. And so that, you have that, uh, because there are arrows drawing, drawn on the path showing possible path locations, that, that might not actually be where they go. This, this plan evolves in regard to market conditions, in regard to further engineering that shows us that certain, uh, directions may be infeasible for pathways. Um, and so it, there has to be some recognition that this is merely a concept master plan and that the lines shown may be modified.
I think there's, I, and I would argue, I agree, there's, they won't know where the paths can go until they do a study of how to make those connect, I think, and conceptual is fine. But I think just because the CAC approves the master plan, they're not looking at the detail level and then the linkages and the connections. And so, um, if you were to look at the master plan that's now pitched in front of the CAC, it's not showing those final connections all the way across the project. And so, um.
It can't.
I would disagree with that. What we're supposed to do is, and you'll see this on the most recent master plan that I handed out to you. And so we're supposed to make north-south, east-west connections. And we have done that. We have already built the east-west connection right here at the beginning of Village Hill Road. And there's the east-west connection at the top of, uh, the Village Hill North. And there's the east-west connection through, uh, in the middle. And that east-west connection does not touch the property lines, uh, on either side of Village Hill. And you will recall maybe that in the Moser Street subdivision, we eliminated, we had originally, uh, had a proposed location for a pathway that ran behind these cottages. And that was eliminated because practically speaking, that's a steep cliff at the back of those properties and a big drop off. And you really wouldn't want to be directing people onto a pathway like that. Uh, similarly, on the other side, we haven't come before you with this, but when we come in with Memorial, uh, Park, you'll see that we investigated the topo there. And there's a, a steep drop off of 10 to 12 feet between the Memorial Park area and the Beechtree Walk. So that we think that the connection there is infeasible. Um, and nowhere in our special permit did it say that the connections east and west had to touch the property lines. That was never a condition and we feel that, uh, it actually would not enhance the trail system. So we are committed to providing an east-west, north-south, uh, interconnected trailway system through the project. But we also recognize that certain, uh, site conditions would preclude certain areas from having a pathway.
But, and this discussion isn't meant to be deciding where that path is gonna go. The discussion is really about the condition. And so I think all I'm suggesting is that, and, and it seems like we're, um, both sides are in agreement that the planning board, um, wants to acknowledge that there may be a risk of going ahead and building a street network without fully planning the paths. And all I'm suggesting is that that middle paragraph that was added, the master plan has been modified as overall redevelopment of North Campus has progressed through the planning board's site plan approval process. I think that's just, um, additional language is not necessary. And it, there certainly doesn't need to be any reference to the CAC approval of a conceptual master plan in this subdivision approval, since they don't have jurisdiction to approve any permits. And it, um, I would just suggest that, um, the, certainly, um, we can add language that says the master plan, you know, could be modified through approval from the planning board, which, which they have, um, identified as wanting to add. But that language that says maybe further modify, modify from time to time as development progresses, I would just suggest that that say, maybe modified through planning board approval. So that's all I'm suggesting is, is change it and sort of not adding that underscored paragraph in the middle.
I, I think it should remain as, as written because that, that is how the development has progressed. It's, it's factually accurate and it sets the, it sets the, the context for the, the, um, following sets of underscored language, saying that we're going to go through the same process. So it explains what has happened and, and what will happen. If we just said, as it may be further modified from time to time as development progresses, well, we haven't given you the context of how that development has progressed without the first set of underscored sentences or sentences.
Didn't you say earlier that the master plan is just conceptual? No, it's not a plan, it's not, it's not designed, so.
It's not definitive, no.
Yeah, so how, I, I, so I'm wondering why that, the master plan doesn't say where you're gonna put the, the, the path. So I'm not sure why that's, yeah, so why is that sentence even needed?
I don't understand what that sentence adds.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, since the master plan is not a design, uh, and the CAC has no jurisdiction over where the paths go or how they connect, they just wanna see paths. That, that sentence adds no value to this condition and I, I don't see why it should be in there.
I, I think that it's an acknowledgement that the, the conceptual master plan is the.
But the conceptual master plan doesn't mean anything except that there's gonna be houses up there and there's gonna be a path.
Right.
But that's it.
And that's essentially what we're saying too.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, the, the CAC has no jurisdiction over where the paths are, how they connect, where the streets are. So I, I, I agree, I don't see what that sentence is adding.
I think it's just an acknowledgement of factually how, I, I think that adds value.
As a condition to this permit for the roads.
Personally, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it doesn't add anything, it doesn't detract from anything, I don't see.
Does it do any damage? It's just, it's just noise, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm quite happy to leave it there if the, if the applicant wants it.
I would, I would strongly urge you to strike any language that has anything to do with the CAC. Cause they have nothing to do with it.
CAC, right. CAC is nothing that this says, it's us, so.
Cut out the CAC reference.
Right, so I'm.
Okay.
That way you get rid of the content.
Right.
Right.
But to me, I mean, you take out CAC, which I think has to go, I mean, what's left is just a statement.
And so it's.
It might as well.
That we're doing our job.
Yeah, I.
That's, that's fine, I don't know.
So we're, we're, we're asking you to cut that out. Take it out and with the approval of, of, to our collective.
Yeah. So have that, have that first, uh, underscored sentence then stop at, uh, Village Hill.
Yeah, in the sentence, at project.
Overall Village Hill project.
Period.
Period. That being accepted.
Because the other thing is, you know, what's, what's odd about this is we've already agreed, we can't talk about the path. It's, that's a site plan. So we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about conditions on something that we've just said, we can't even tell it. You, all we want you to do is to promise us when you put the paths in, when they're designed, if you tear up a road to do it, it's on your dime.
This is, this, the, the, this condition was born because of, um, uh, more exacting attempts to lay out bike paths that, that everyone agreed in the process was actually not acceptable right now.
But it's not there anymore.
Exactly, this just, this just shows where.
We're good, we're good.
All right.
We're good.
So that was.
Number 24.
Number 25, as built shall contain a statement from a lighting engineer, the lights have been installed and comply with the plan.
Why a lighting engineer, Carolyn?
That's a standard requirement.
I don't think we've ever provided one from a lighting engineer.
Well, it can be.
From the design engineer in the project that they've been installed.
Uh, that's, that's fine.
So a design engineer instead of lighting engineer?
No, no, the, the lighting is actually, the, the photometric plan is developed by the manufacturer of the lights that we're using, that we're specifying for the project.
So what are we saying then?
So I'm saying, just change it to the design engineer.
Yes, yes, yeah, that works, yep.
Open space, as offered by the applicant and in compliance with the special permit granted, all bikeways, trails and open spaces are to be open for public access. Except as noted above, the mechanism for allowing access shall be either through easements or dedication, whichever the applicant chooses, and shall be recorded prior to submission of the as built for final sign off.
And this one, I guess, needs to be deleted. I don't know how it was, that relates to the other objectionable conditions that were taken out before.
So we're taking that one out.
Yeah.
Sanitary sewer. Prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant must resolve outstanding issues with Massachusetts DEP and receive approval from Massachusetts for sewer line extensions and said approval must be submitted to DPW.
Since this, this comment was first raised by DPW, Mass DEP has been notified and responded. The Mass DEP does not get involved into the local jurisdiction authority. And Gale Associates is working with the DPW to get the formal notice application and approval. And we'll get it, we expect to get it before this project is, is begun.
So we have to reword this? It's not the Massachusetts DEP?
Yeah, initially Dave Alita had written it because he thought Mass DEP needed to issue the, the sewer extension permit. But in fact, it's the local DPW.
So Carolyn?
She's got it.
Oh, yeah, I'll see it. All right. 28. Tie cards showing location of all water sewer and drainage must be submitted to Northampton DPW prior to requesting street acceptance or release of performance guarantees.
Yep, that's generic.
Put down the profile for the existing sewer manholes, manhole to be converted to connect to this new sewer line shows a sweep drop, which does not match the detail. This must be revised.
That done?
That's been handled.
That's been done. Can be doing.
30. The sewer pipe drop below 10 feet shall be PVC SPR APD.
That's addressed as well.
A mortar collar all around for the outside drop sewer manhole detail shall be included.
That's done.
32. The outside drop sewer manhole detail shall be revised as follows. Those are all done. Dude, I hate reading this. Intention pod stormwater erosion control. Number 33. The proposed catch basins at the intersection of Village Hill and driveways for the coach house and a proposed townhouse lot shall be moved further north to the apex of their respective radii in order to assure the interception of gutter flow.
That's done.
34. The existing drain stub converts into the existing DMH on Village Hill Road from the coach house and the townhouse lot must be provided to Department of Public Works.
None of that's done also. That's just done.
Enough, Randy, come on, we're almost done. 35. Prior to any exclamation, all tree protection measures as shown in the detail sheet must be reviewed by the city.
Yep.
So does that mean Andrew is going to, you guys, tree committee?
For designated?
No, not for, not public trees.
We usually notify Carolyn and then she notifies whomever.
This is a special case. It's public trees.
Well, if there's public trees, then there's, you know.
Robert Whitey there.
Yeah.
36. Prior to final endorsement, mylar's and all electronics and metals required for the subdivision rules shall be submitted with all revisions, details and conditions shown, as well as reference error corrections noted in the comments from the DPW.
Extended.
37. Except as waived here in all aspects of the subdivision, including construction materials and method adjustments, inspection plans and process shall conform with the Northampton subdivision regulations.
Extended.
What's this, 38? 38?
No, the one that isn't titled.
That's more of a comment than a condition.
It's all standard stuff.
All right, so we have also one, two, three, or five waivers. 500-foot centerline radius approved for forward crossing to Village Hill Road and a 950-foot centerline radius for forward crossing through the bay. Grade approaching intersection of Village Hill exceeds 2%. Up to 3.09% is permitted in this waiver. Cross section for location of sidewalks. Sidewalks should be one foot from the back right in the front, right underneath the dead one. Intersection angle 90-degree wave to allow 89-degree intersection of Ford and Village Hill. Tree belts should be a minimum of eight foot wide. No tree closer than four feet to the pavement or curves. And bear areas of budding on street parking, tree belts proposed be a minimum of six foot wide. So that's it. Carolyn, we had a waiver for the traffic study too. I don't have any to go on there. We, we had to address that together. Well, yeah, now we're down to the conditions. We can ask for further comments. So we're adding one more waiver for the traffic study?
Yes.
Is there a payment loop tax of, of?
No, well, there, you mean, traffic mitigation?
Yeah.
On the overall, from the, going back to the original special permit, there's a whole list of traffic mitigation and they have to perform them at different junctures where different thresholds of development.
So we don't have to put it in here?
No, because it's already covered.
We have a project traffic study that we're required to do on an annual basis.
All righty. Any member of the public that'd like to speak in this room? All right. Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I guess I qualify as a public. All that's left here. Jonathan, Wright, Wright Builders, thank you for your consideration of this subdivision. It has been exhaustively reviewed by us at Wright Builders. And the location of the road reflects actually three different landscape architects' review of the drip line of the trees that was discussed here earlier tonight. And the placement of the lots is specifically designed to protect those trees as well as the placement of the paths. So part of the evolution that you've seen over the last 14 months with the location of this road has been around the land, the natural landscape there. So I think that's important. It's a credit to the Mass Development Engineering effort to make sure that that happens. A number of really nice features that you're incorporating, hopefully into your permit grant tonight, the off-street parking, which has turned out to be great at Village Hill for visitors and for overflow visiting children and those kinds of things. The layout of the street trees has worked out really well. They're filling in very well. So the standards that you have set up that are being continued in this are great for the residents and really, I think, bear a great comment on the work of the board and the staff and the agencies.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We get reviewed by our chief on the radius. I don't know whether that's a good radius or not, but I mean, we've got, we're asking for waivers on turning radiuses. I don't know what those were.
Oh, instead of the 90 degrees, the 89?
Well.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's the 500.
A lot, but still.
A 500-foot centerline radius.
Oh, that just means very slight curve.
Well, that's all I'm asking. Is that, is that, does someone, is someone telling me that's okay?
That's all reviewed by DPW.
DPW.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
We should make the DPW come.
Yeah.
Don't you think they've suffered through enough of the way I feel here?
We should just wait till 5 o'clock to tell them they have to be here or something.
That's right. All right, any other comments or questions on this? I think we're going to be seeing another permit probably in March and then hopefully another one, you know, as they, as the southwestern comes in, so.
May I, may I move to close the phone here?
You may. All in favor? All right. Randy, you want to keep going?
Except I don't have the, I have another plate here. Okay. This doesn't have the stuff I wanted either.
Yeah, the bottom, I'm sure.
Yeah, it says continuation of hearing. It doesn't say what. Where's the original? No, same one.
Carolyn, can you read out the, because all we have is the definitive subdivision for forward cross. Is that enough?
Yes.
I want to approve the definitive.
Hold on, I'll make the motion first.
Then we approve the forward crossing definitive subdivision plan at Village Hill.
Great. Um, we have the conditions.
With?
With the conditions of this.
And waivers.
And waivers. Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Y'all set?
Thank you.
That's a lot of talk for a formative.
Yeah.
All right, one last thing.
If I could just say, I'm, I'm very happy to come back on the March 8 meeting and do a more full presentation of the revisions to the master plan.
Okay, so we, so we have March 8 already?
Whenever you want.
All right, we'll talk to Carolyn.
Linda Manor. Please, Karen, call me back. Plus two more permits.
All on March 8?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to put you off. That's going to be a long wait.
Try to make your sentence on the 22nd with Jonathan to see here.
Oh, yeah, that's what, I figured we should do it. All right, quickly, we have minutes. Oh, this was for the meeting, you guys got it at 7:30?
I'm, I'm, I have to kill 20 minutes. Yeah, we had, yeah, that's too unreasonable.
Sorry. No, 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 this is the last.
Oh, you're talking about.
Think it out at 7:30.
No, I. That's not quite accurate because when the hearing opened at 7:30, you're. Take a couple of minutes to pose a question. No. I think that the minutes should be right.
Did you get that picture?
Now I didn't get it. It's my Facebook picture. And I've gotten many comments on it. It's awesome. It sort of stumps me up for.
Pause a second.
I approved the events. They're very nice.
All in favor?
My team did one.
Mark, you did second.
Did we just do?
No, no, we did it. Oh, 1:34 we started. What the, what next meeting is March?
28.
8th.
Under the banner?
That's the Thursday.
Two special permits.
Two, Linda Manor and two special permits.
Yeah. Um, hold on. Oh, special permit for, under the new zoning for, uh, ground-mounted solar in residential districts. And, uh, we, we, and there's one other one.
So Linda Manor's at 7?
No, Linda Manor's at 8. Site plan, oh, the site plan approval on the consolidation of the Clark School in one parcel. But it's really just about the creation of a parking lot. And then a ground-mounted solar array and then Linda Manor.
What's the address for ground mount?
311 Chesterfield Road.
Why does that sound?
By next to the women.
Does everybody know about this conference on, uh, March 17, the planning conference?
Is that in Worcester?
Yeah, it's the one in Worcester that happens every.
Yeah, I, I went to one of them. It was worthwhile.
It's pretty interesting.
Do we have meetings up on the email box?
Yeah.
Have the plans for the special meetings, I mean, the joint?
Oh, yes, March 12, joint public hearing here with ordinance committee. On the zoning changes, like that whole list from soup to nuts.
Oh, the ones that Marilyn and I didn't like.
Chicken to zoning to home behavior.
Wait, when did you, I think you scheduled that. Did you schedule it for the?
12.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think I told you that.
Yeah.
I can, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
So, probably.
You, you and me?
We just need a majority.
Yeah, I don't want.
We just need four.
I actually, I think I'm out of count.
Uh, hold on, so raise your hand if you cannot be there. So Captain?
Carolyn knows when she sent it out.
Well, that was the fastest I've seen you move. All right, so who's five of us?
Oh, no, okay.
We need five.
I think you said you could.
Yeah, 13.
No, it's the 12. It's Monday.
13th, I've got knee surgery. So that'll be my last hurrah.
Oh, they finally let you in?
The thing I saw about the, there are six applications for the community preservation grants. I can tell people about them next time.
Yeah, let's do next time.
Yeah.
Hold on, time's up.
Six.
Six. On Monday, the 12th, I, I've agreed to teach a class, but the class might not happen. So.
So if we have only four of us?
Yes.
If you have four, you can, but it'd be great to have five.
I'll try and figure that out.
What are you teaching?
It's the ham radio thing.
So much.
Imagine 101.
Oh, no, no, it's a seminar. It's a band.
No, it's a show itself.
So we're going to get revised plans for Linda Manor.
They just came in today, so, um, yes, you will.
And everybody, I think we talked about should take a, take a drive out there at night, just to get an idea of the lighting. Were you here for the first time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, but I went and drove. I went and drove the driveway that goes all the way up on the, this side of the property.
Yep, okay.
And it's, it's amazing what's going on on those properties. I mean, I was, I counted 14 cars.
Oh, on the property's budding. I know. I know, that's that when I jog by all the time, yeah.
14 cars.
There's one house.
Mm-hmm. I know the one that's, one of the first ones.
Yeah. As you're coming up. Not that that affects planning per se, but it just put context over whatever.
Oh, no, no, it's not getting into discussion because we can't, but, but what I'm just saying is if you can, go up there at night so you get an idea of the lighting. If that, if, why don't we do the day trip up there? But a lot of the names we talked about is the lights and.
Well, I have one question that is like, being a novice. If, if they have trouble with the batteries at 4:00 in the morning, is there anything that can?
Yeah, well, we can't drive up there. All right, anything else? I don't know, it's not like, I have to drive twice every time. Second?
Yeah, I don't know whether that's the.
All in favor? I assume you, you seconded, Carolyn.